I'm with some people. I get too embarrassed.
You did too, you'd be right here.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's.
Wow, look at this. Handsome bunch.
Is this the group that's gonna sing?
Wow. Hey, I have a question, young lady, how come you got such a bad attitude?
They said it's still warmer than mine, it's so hot.
I got a.
Where'd you go to?
Uh, Walmart. No, not Walmart. Yeah, pretty good sale. Ron has been one, well, I had one, it just died probably a year and a half ago.
I kind of expect computers and software to last forever when you're lying.
Well, you do. You like computers, you're working long.
Took the time or effort, didn't have the patience to learn. It's probably like the human brain. Using five percent capacity.
If you get used to them, I'm not as familiar with.
Good, how are you tonight? Yes.
But warmer than most of the tree lighting ceremony, so.
Yes.
I'm like five foot five, I'm leaving my coat here. I'm like close to yours.
There you go, I'll remind you.
This is always busy, I feel like, so.
He is.
No, he's still working with us, we won't let him retire.
Well, I've worked with him for thirty years.
We're, we're ready, Mayor.
Huh? Awesome. How's it going? The Lakers hat, that's probably a deal breaker, man. Are you a LeBron fan?
Councilman Vanshiri.
No? Alright.
We need you. Alright, we're gonna go ahead and get started with our council meeting this evening, we'd like to welcome everyone here, thank you for being seated. Uh, we're starting a little bit later than our typical start time due to the tree lighting ceremony, our annual Christmas tree lighting ceremony, it was wonderful. We'd like to thank our historical commission and our Parks and Rec staff and all those that helped put that together, we have a huge crowd over at the community center. If you, uh, finish up here, you might be able to catch some, some more treats and games and sit on Santa's lap, Sergeant. Okay, alright, alright, there we go. Alright, so, welcome tonight to our council meeting, this Monday, December fourth, twenty twenty-three, here in the Linden City Council chambers. Um, I will be conducting, Carolyn Lundberg, and I'd like to thank my fellow council members that are here this evening. Uh, we first will begin with an invocation given by Councilmember Mike Vanshiri, and then we will have the Pledge of Allegiance, um, provided by and led by, um, young Mr. Sanchez, Anthony Sanchez, alright, we'll go to that point.
Thank you. Our kind heavenly Father, how grateful we are to be together here as public servants and citizens and friends of this great community, Linden City. We are thankful for the successful tree lighting ceremony and for the spirit of community and goodwill that we experienced, and pray that thou might continue through the holiday seasons and the coming years. We are thankful for thy son, Jesus Christ, for whom we celebrate this season, pray that we'll always have his teachings and his example in our hearts and minds as we treat others kindly and do service to others and try to make our community and our world a better place. We pray that thy Spirit will be with us tonight as we debate the important issues, that we can do so in a, a, a civil manner and that we can come to some good resolutions, and as always, we pray for our families while we're away from them, that they'll be compensated in our absence. Know that we love and care for them and protect them while we are away from them. These things we pray for and do so in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Audience there? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Anthony. Alright, we will now have a call to order, and I'll start here on my left.
Randy, I'll present.
Jake Hoyt, present.
Carolyn Lundberg, present.
Mike Vanshiri, present.
Van Broderick, present.
Alright, and then we also have, uh, a council member, Magleby, is excused this evening, um, due to a conflict. But we do have a quorum, so we're happy to proceed, alright, so item number two on the agenda is our presentations and announcements. And we do have a special, uh, acknowledgement, we've just recently had a promotion within our police department, I'd like to invite Chief Brower to come up, and we wanted to give a special commendation to one of Linden's finest.
Thanks, Mayor, Council, uh, just, we just recently had a promotional process for Sergeant Barlow's vacancy, uh, it was, we do have some, some pretty incredible people here at the city working, it was a very difficult decision. Uh, we promoted Gil Sanchez, the sergeant, to take Matt Barlow's place, and we're excited about the future of, of the police department with him and his leadership, he's accomplished a great deal in his time here, and, and I can, I'm sure he will continue to do so, so. That being said, I'm gonna invite Jessica up to pin his sergeant badge on him, and then we'll, we'll move on from that, but congrats. I forgot to mention his parents and, and kids and wife.
Yes. Alright, can you, can you enact pinning him one more time, we're gonna catch a picture. Gotta get the photo off. Alright.
Okay, we'll do the kiss again, too.
Alright. Any, any words you'd like to give?
I just, I appreciate, uh, Chief Brower and you guys for giving me this opportunity, I, I just, just furthers and entrenches my position here with the city, I, I'll, I'll be here for years to come, this just furthers that, and I appreciate, uh, everyone's support, everybody's been awesome. Uh, and I look forward to earning this spot even more than I have already, I'm, I'm ready to put in the work, so.
Fantastic, Council, any, any words?
Just highly qualified, just so excited that you're joining our team, I mean, we're advancing the team, sorry.
You're doing great work, we love you, we, we love the team, and I know i- it's tough because there was different, and great, they're great members of the team, we, we, we love you though, and fully support you, and, and I'm sure that your, your ability to make those tacos just puts you over the top. I know that's what it was. They're incredible.
No, 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 correction, she's the one who makes the tacos.
I've been deceived all these years, no, I've had them, they're incredible.
We, we come as a team, so.
That's right.
Yeah, my family loves to hear, so I appreciate all the support you guys have given my family, and look forward to many more years.
Well, he speaks highly of you, and I know that if I got to speak with you, you'd speak highly of him, so.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks for coming.
Alright, and then we are now moving on to item number three, this is open session for public comment, so you may notice at the door, there are papers of the agenda that you may follow this evening, if you have something you would like to address the council, uh, something that is not on tonight's current agenda, this is the time to do so. Alright, see no one jumping out of their chair, we will go on to item number four, our council reports, and Randy, you look ready to take it away?
Sure, thank you so much, and I know I'll be one, a lot of people echo this, but the tree lighting ceremony was phenomenal, one of the best we've had in a long time, at least in, in my memory, just a great crowd, and there's been a little transition, and though we had all, all the traditions, I liked the fresh approach that was um, given tonight, um, and so kudos to the past, and kudos to the present, and looking forward to the future. Just a really great, um, program tonight, and great comments by everyone involved. Um, Officer Chan Sanchez just left, but I did speak with him, and, um, I have mentioned, I believe, to, I'm not sure if it's Kathy or to Brittany, but he has a laser pointer that works, and he has promised to send the link, and if he hasn't, make sure you bother him about that, there is a laser pointer so that we don't have to say like, on the left side or the right side. So, he has laser pointers that do, does work, so, that was really exciting for me to see that. Um, for the senior center, coming up this, during this month, they're having what's called the Soul Drive, which is, um, asking for donations of socks and foods that will be distributed for amongst um, the needy people in the community, um, that's just available in the community center there, on the senior side, those should be some barrels there. Um, coming up on the nineteenth, um, on a Tuesday night, be, with the new screen that is in the community center now, um, on the auditorium side, they are going to do a fun, um, a viewing of The Holiday Inn by Irving Berlin, that's gonna be on Tuesday night, I'm guessing like six o'clock, but I did not put that, um, timeframe down, but, and then also, just prior to that, on Wednesday, the thirteenth, which is a wonderful day in our city, um, for a celebration as well earlier in the day, but at five thirty that night will be the senior center, um, of Christmas party, and that's a five dollar per person with an RSVP requested. And then next Monday, um, in this chamber at four o'clock is our Linden City Council, that's all I have.
Thanks, Randy.
Oh, I'm sorry, Linden City Youth Council, my bad. You're all welcome to join, though.
Awesome, um, just a couple of quick updates from Parks and Rec, the, the tree lighting ceremony, great job, Mayor, on, on your speech, the Santa extravaganza going on now over there. In two days is the Santa Parade, and if you guys haven't had an opportunity to just go wave to them as they drive by, I heard the mayor's dressing up as Santa this year, is that right? No, I'm just kidding. But a lot of exciting stuff going on, on over there, Parks and Rec, uh, PD, uh, been several arrests over the past couple of weeks, Chief's keeping us in, in, informed, we appreciate him, and then the hiring process for the sergeant, and you know, i- it is tough to hire within an organization, and I appreciate that we did promote within the organization, I think that's, that's the way to go. I do think it's difficult when you have multiple qualified, uh, applicants, and I think they handled it really well, appreciate all those who served on the Hiring Committee, and, and excited for Sergeant Sanchez. That's all I have.
Alright, Councilmember Vanshiri.
Thank you, um, we had the two, uh, Development Review Committee, um, potential applicants come in and visit with us this morning, uh, one of them, neither one of them are, are imminent. Uh, they were just questioning what they needed to do in terms of setbacks and, uh, parking and landscaping and so forth, so it was a good productive meeting. I think everyone left understanding what needed to be done, so, uh, it was, it, they were good, good meetings, and our, our staff always does a good job of being helpful rather than trying to throw barriers in front of them, so I was appreciative of that myself, so. North Point, uh, I think I mentioned this, but we've been in regular, constant negotiations with Fairfield City on a few issues, that I think we finally came up with a final draft and agreement which, uh, their council will approve, hopefully this next week, and then we can just get on with our business, just things to do, like with road maintenance and, um, some other issues that yeah, e- everything's fine, so, um, I think I mentioned to you that we'd be changing from a, uh, a, um, special services district to an interlocal, uh, agency, and that's in the process, uh, very shortly. And again, we can do it however you want it, we can make a full-blown presentation to the council, or I think if, if you desire, we can meet with the mayor, uh, and, and Adam, or any of the ones you want to, however you want to do it, we're prepared to do it, but really, i- as far as the cities are concerned, the member cities, it's transparent. There's really no difference, the only difference is, is it takes Utah County out of the equation, and they want to be out of the equation. Rob Mann, who is, um, I think he's the clerk? Auditor, yeah, it was basically at his request that we consider this, uh, because they just don't, he just doesn't want to have to mess with it in terms of their books and their reporting and everything else, so. It's, it's a smooth transition, everyone's in favor of it, so we don't have really any issues, so. And we're in the process of getting our conference room, which, uh, was demolished by the garbage trucks, I think I shared some photos with you. We're still working with insurance, but.
I had heard that there was a board meeting in that exact spot the day before.
Yeah, that, that, that morning, we had a board meeting, yeah, and literally, I, I, I don't wanna, you know, it's not hyperbole, I, I know that several of us would have been crushed, killed easily. Yeah, so.
Yeah, the photograph was terrifying, they showed.
Was the individual let go?
Don't know, don't know, I'm sure he's feeling bad enough, I didn't pursue it.
Scary stuff.
Yeah, it is scary stuff, and I've been pushing for new chairs for our conference room ever since I've been on the board, and this is a, boy, this is, this is the time, I put in the request, so. Uh, let me think, Chamber of Commerce, uh, they have a lot of activities going on right now in terms of businesses of the month, and, uh, all kinds of parties and presentations and so forth, so they continue to be active, and, uh, Mike, I think you've been attending more of those meetings lately than I have, but appreciate that, and Jake, I don't know about you, but.
Yeah, I've had a opportunity to attend a few ribbon cuttings and stuff.
Yeah, they're, they're doing well, and, um, yeah, so I think that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, alright.
What I was gonna say has already been mentioned, you know, the Christmas tree lighting, wonderful event, again, glad that it's supported well by the community, it's just fun when the community comes together a- and just rub shoulders and enjoy the spirit of the season, it's a wonderful community that we live in, and so, I won't repeat everything that everybody else has said, but great place, good events going on.
Alright, thank you so much, um, one other event that's coming up this Thursday in our community center, um, there's an interfaith, uh, council group, uh, that is doing a special art show and music, they're unveiling, um, sacred art by a variety of artists, um, traveling from around the country, and they're having Nathan Osman come sing, so it starts, doors open at six at the community center, and they'll have the music and the art show, and the tickets, uh, there's a nominal amount for tickets, it's going to support, uh, a school in Columbia. So it's a fundraiser. So I have it posted on the Linden Community Connection page.
I'll check that.
And it's hosted by our Bible Fellowship Church here.
Adam had mentioned that he had tickets, that he's dropped off at
I think they.
At the city center for the council.
Paul Grass, Paul Grass dropped off some tickets.
He said, hey, your tickets are there, and I said, I haven't seen them.
Find out about that.
I, they, if they're in my box, let's grab them tonight, and I can share those with you guys.
Yeah, I'm on an arc on Adam, I saw them listed on eBay and, uh, and K S.
With my name underneath it, is that?
Mayor, one other thing, quick, I forgot, uh, I just happened to run into Eric Dowell, uh, at Walmart in a pharmacy line, we had a, a good conversation, and he's, uh, more than desirous for us to come over and take a look at, uh, the progress he's making on the
Great.
On the puzzle and the picture and so forth, so, he was very, very kind, very excited, so.
Wonderful. Okay, and then, uh, this week we had, uh, uh, as mentioned tonight, um, we had Sergeant Matt Barlow retire, and he had a wonderful, um, retirement party thrown by the PD, um, huge turnout, he served also in Pleasant Grove prior to us poaching him here in Linden. So, a lot of, uh, those fellows from there came over as well, and it was just really wonderful to hear the stories, and he's off, uh, traveling the country now, uh, with his kids, and so, we wish him well, we talked with him about, you know, maybe we could have him back. Chief, you wanna kind of share a little bit really quickly about that?
I, I totally need to apologize as I was getting updated by Mary.
Talking about Sergeant Barlow's retirement, that he may, uh, down the road.
Oh, yes, so.
We were chatting with him.
Sergeant Barlow's headed on a six-month journey with his wife and kids to cross-country in a, in a, uh, kind of experience that. His plan is to come back and potentially come back to work with us part-time, so that'd be a huge benefit if he's, if he's still doing that within the next six months, so we're really excited about that opportunity to have him come back and help us out, fulfill vac- vacancies, vacations, things like that.
Yeah, he's been tremendous.
With his family cross-country.
Homeschooling the kids.
Still married, and his kids are still talking to him.
Alright, and then myself and staff, we, we had a meeting with U T A, um, about the bus stops here in Linden, that's something that we've been working on for quite some time now, trying to get some of the bus stops improved, especially for, um, citizens with disabilities out there in front of Avalon, and then also, you might notice, the bus stop in front of Walmart, um, needs some TLC. Um, so hopefully, we're gonna be able to make some progress in that effort, just met with them and working towards that, there's a lot of bureaucratic levels to kind of wade through. Um, looking to improve those, though, for the citizens, hopefully, and then also, uh, this last week, the county hosted an event for elected officials announcing, this is just an interesting thing, trying to get a Major League Baseball team here into the state, you might be hearing this percolating a little bit, um, they have a site in, in, uh, actually, it's between Salt Lake City on I eighty, between Salt Lake and the freeway as the location, um, and they think they have a really good chance to, to get the franchise here. They are building a, a triple A, you know, they've moved the B's stadium out to daybreak, uh, is the plan, uh, for the triple A league, and they're saying that, you know, there's a lot of things going with that, so you may be hearing about that in the news coming up, they seem to be, and it's the former owners of the Jazz and some other, you know, uh, Dell Murphy was there, Steve Young, they're all kind of an ownership group there, working on that, so. Could be pretty amazing for the state to have our own Major League Baseball team, so, um, they're hoping to, you know, get people excited about it, so we can see if that comes our way, um, then also, uh, met with the tip working group with MAG, um, Adam, I want to thank Adam for attending those meeting, that last meeting that I couldn't make, but uh, Mountain Land Association of Governments, this is the entity that receives a lot of the, the, some of the federal and state funding for our infrastructure here, and roads and whatnot, transportation, infrastructure, and we have, uh, right now, as you all know, I know as long as I've been on the council, and you all have been here, we've had our Heritage Trail nearly complete, I want to say ninety percent, is that accurate? Uh, ninety, ninety-five percent, so hopefully, we could get this done, it would be the first, uh, pedestrian horse bicycle trail from the east all the way to the lake and the entire county, and it also intersects with the Murdoch Canal Trail, which is quite incredible, so we have this one little hang-up down by the lake, Union Pacific, getting right away, and as that's kind of been in a snag, um, costs have gone up to finish that trail, so, uh, this Thursday in MAG, um, we're gonna be asking the board to, to increase the allotment there on the original grant for that trail, so that we can complete it and also connect to our new exciting Geneva Park Resort uh, plan that was kind of discussed and unveiled last time, so. Anyway, we're excited about that, and Adam and I also were invited to attend Alpine School District last Monday, um, a breakfast, and, uh, currently, um, as you know, the, the district, you know, Orem tried to do a, uh, a splitting, uh, creating their own district that failed on the, on their ballot last year, um, but the district currently, right now, is, has been undergoing an internal study of their programs, um, such as the language programs and the advanced learning programs, so this very much affects our Linden Elementary, which has A L L, and also our Rocky Mountain, which has a tremendous, uh, Portuguese program. So their next, uh, meeting here in December, I believe it's December fifteenth, they're gonna be, uh, discussing their results of their, uh, study of those programs, so for those in the community that are interested, I plan to attend that, um, and then also, the district informed us that they have hired a third-party company, uh, consulting firm, M G T, out of state to do a study on reconfiguration, so reconfiguration is just a fancy word for potentially dividing the district again, and so, uh, M G T right now is taking interviews from those that would like to give feedback to that process, and that will be continuing for the next couple of months, and they are expected to provide results of their study sometime January to February. Is there anything you'd like to add, Adam, to that?
The ballot issue?
Oh, correct, so they, depending on the results of that study, they may put it on the ballot in twenty twenty-four. Um, whatever they determine the reconfiguration should look like, if it's a two-way split, a three-way split, or the boundaries, I'm not quite sure, um, it could be on the ballot next fall.
So they, they announced it as basically.
Kind of a done deal, yeah.
And so the consultant will be assisting, guiding the board with their findings of, here's where the line should be, here's where costs would be allocated between the two or the other districts, and then the board essentially sounded like their intent was, they can't get out from under this question of should the district split, or the district is too big, they kind of iterated that it was, this is looming over every big action and decision they make now, and they felt like they have to move forward with this, to get it to the people, so this will be a vote in November, it's a presidential election year, so you're gonna have a huge turnout, which is a good thing, um, and so a vote in November, assuming they put it on the ballot to split the district or not, and they would have the information on where that boundary would be prior to that, and then if it passes, they said it wouldn't be effective until the twenty-eight, twenty-nine school year, so it would be four years out. So that would give time for people to get through a high school or through a junior high or something of that nature, and be informed that, uh, there would be some sort of decision.
And they would elect a new board the following year, and then do the dividing of the assets, and then start, you know, hiring, and so that was somewhat of the timeline that they scoped out, um, currently Linden Elementary is still within the closure possibility, um, they also let us know. So I know that's a, a big deal here in our community.
Did they give a timeline for that?
No.
No, I would imagine they're gonna, it's gonna be part of those findings with the programs, here December fifteenth, there, there may be more word on that, so.
Thank you.
Alright, and I'd like to welcome our newly elected council members here, Lincoln and Leica Jacobs and Cole Houli here, welcome.
Welcome.
Alright, so moving forward, um, administrators report.
Um, I've identified a few things there, uh, just wanted to highlight, December thirteenth, Kathy Mosman, our city recorder, we're gonna have an open house, she's retiring, so this is her last, second to last meeting. She'll, uh, be helping us out, and, and actually, today, coming to Square and Brittany on January second, so that'll be a nice thing, so. Uh, Brittany Ladler has been, uh, appointed to be, she's currently our deputy city recorder, and she'll be our new city recorder in January, so. And then December fifteenth, our employee Christmas party at the community center, if you're able to make that, that would be great.
I stand corrected, I think that the A S D is December thir- twelfth, thank you, twelfth, so it doesn't.
Do we get to vote on the Kathy retirement? I'd like to vote against that.
Not gonna get any, anybody making a motion on that.
Veto.
Their item, uh, dealing with the elections, actually, we had hoped to get those vote, the vote tallies from the county today, um, they had, the way we understood it, there was, uh, about four hundred or so ballots that had to come from the state, and they are countywide ballots, and so we don't know if they'll even impact Linden's numbers, but officially, we won't have those until tomorrow, and so we'll be holding a special meeting uh, to canvas the votes tomorrow at five fifteen, just in the conference room here across the lobby, and should be really fast, we'll go through at the, this is our last agenda item tonight, so we'll go through everything that we know thus far, and give you an update on that tonight, um, but by state statute, we have to have it, the votes canvassed by Wednesday, fourteen days after the election, so every city is meeting tomorrow, that I can tell, um, to canvas their votes, so. That's all I have, Mayor, thanks.
Alright, that makes us, we're on to item number six, this is the approval of the minutes from November twentieth, uh, Council, do you have any changes or adjustments?
I do not.
I don't either, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Alright, we have a motion by Councilmember Hoyt, do I have a second, seconded by Councilmember Broderick, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and the minutes are approved, alright, this moves us on to the consent agenda, uh, item number seven, um, we do have a, a couple, a couple, well, one thing here to review. These are items that do not need, um, discussion, so turn this over to.
I do want to give you a quick sales tax update before we review.
I do want to give you a quick sales tax update before we review this issue with the merit increases. So we've had, as you're aware, a decrease in our sales tax over the last 10 months or so. We've dipped below what we had received last year and then a few months below what we had received for the same months the year prior. However, we just received another report this month, and it's better than we've ever had on that specific month. So I'm hopeful that we've had two out of the last three months that have been positive and haven't dropped. And so I'm hopeful we're at the bottom of that trough. Just a quick, to identify on this graph, each of those red bumps is basically a 12-month cycle. We did see in the last year or so, the most significant decline that we've had in that, in that span of time. But again, I'm optimistic that we'll pull back out of that. We have several businesses that are coming online, the Kia dealership being that big one that should help us in those revenues. So just wanted to give you that update before you took action on those merit increases. We have a very healthy general fund balance and again, optimistic for the future on sales tax revenues for the city. So we would recommend approving that. As it's already been approved in the budget, this is just a glance at it again at the six-month mark, so.
As always, Adam, there are evaluations of performance that are going on.
Correct.
Rough estimate on a percentage, we're usually high 90s-
We are.
Of who will be receiving those. That's, we're on par for that this year as well.
Yes.
Right, and for those that are listening, we usually approve the proposed merit prior to the budget adoption in July. And so as, this is just traditionally, the city kind of reviews the merit increases mid-budget year.
Yeah, seeing how our finances are, making sure we're not headed in the wrong direction with revenues.
I appreciate this opportunity to just take a quick look at it. I think it's, this is an important issue. It's wide sewer chip of our funds. And I think, I'm, you know, I'm comfortable, I appreciate seeing that again. I know the last time we saw this graphic, it was just kind of on the trending downward. It's good to see it bounce back a little bit, but I'm comfortable with this.
So appreciative of our staff, our employees, for the way they manage themselves and the way they manage our city. They have a collaborative efforts with each other and with us, and I'm just so appreciative of everything they do. And if we need a motion, I'd be happy to make that. Okay, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Powell.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Van Sherry. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, it is unanimous. Thank you to our staff and employees for doing a tremendous job. This is, we're very grateful. All right, so now we're moving on to item number eight. This is a recess to the Linden City Redevelopment Agency meeting.
Do you have that in front of you or any?
I'll make a motion to, I move to recess, sorry, the Linden City Council meeting and convene the Linden City RDA.
Second.
To my Councilmember Powell, seconded by Councilmember Hoyt, to reconvene. All in favor?
Aye.
We are now in the RDA, and we will do another call to order for the record. Okay, roll call.
Randy Powell, present.
Jake Hoyt, present.
Carolyn Lindberg, present.
Mike Van Sherry, present.
Van Broderick, present.
All right, so we are now, okay. Brief minutes-
That's right.
To approve from our meeting, our last RDA meeting was October 16th. So council, have you had a chance to review those?
Mayor, I've reviewed those, and I'm comfortable, if the council's comfortable. I'll make a motion to approve those RDA minutes from October 16th.
Very good, thank you. Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Hoyt again, seconded by Councilmember Powell, to approve the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that was all ayes. It passes. All right, now we're on to item number four, I'm sorry, item number three. This is a discussion item to review and discuss some of the bond bids. So I'd like to invite our guest here from Louis Young.
Jason Burningham-
Jason Burningham.
From Louis, LRB is the-
LRB.
Yes, so thank you for being here, Jason. Jason and LRB have been our city's financial consultants for a number of years and have helped us on this most recent bond. What we provided to you in our staff report packet was this breakdown that LRB prepared that showed the various bids that we received for this bond. Just as a quick background, this is being considered due to the city desiring to purchase some land that is out along our 700 North Commercial Corridor. This would be in an area right about there. It's 8.2 acres. That would be, was slated to be developed into single-family residential and some townhomes. Ivory Homes approached the city about buying this. We've been looking to try to bring in some commercial and retail development along the corridor for a number of years. And the city's acting now to purchase that property so that a larger commercial or retail development could occur out along that corridor. So this purchase of land is for potential economic development purposes. The bond on this, as, after taking into account the money that the city would be putting down on the payment for this property, we'd be looking at a par amount of about 3.79 million. And what we had presented in our staff report as the preferred option was this Zion's Bank Option B. The council strongly wanted to have the ability to pay down this bond early and at any time be able to pay it off based on our revenues that we're generating. One of the reasons that we selected this, as you'll notice, it's not the lowest total cost for when factoring in interest. However, it is amortized over a 15-year period and allows us to have a smaller annual debt service. So if we were to get into a financial bind, we wouldn't be obligated to pay a higher amount. That would be the case with this other Option A that was kind of our second choice. This allows us to be proactive, and we would need to be principled and pay more than what this lowest amount for the annual payment is, that 3.38. LRB ran a schedule for us of payments, and if we are paying around 453,000 a year or more, we would be able to pay this off within that 10-year period. The downside to this Option B, if you could call it a downside, there is a balloon payment that was identified in your staff report. Let me zoom in on that. If we were to hit year 10, that balloon payment would be due. However, again, acting in a way that we would pay more than our minimum, that dollar amount of that last year would decrease with the amounts that we'd be paying extra. So assuming we're hitting that target of that 453 a year or more, we would be, end up with nothing owed. The two comparisons, as we ran some quick numbers from LRB, and looking at those two options, A and B, assuming that we can, again, hit that target and pay everything down before that year 10, it was only about $8,000 difference on the total debt service. And so we felt like having that flexibility to have the lower required annual payment versus the higher amount was worth that $8,000 difference. So I hope I explained that all correctly, Jason.
Very good.
And if there's other questions on some of these other offers and bids, if I could-
Good, Adam, just a quick question on that Chase Bank Option A. It looks like it doesn't have the balloon payment. It looks like it's a slightly lower rate and a slightly lower debt service. Why not Chase Option A?
Yeah, I think that's a great observation. Adam did a great job, I think, describing this. So Madam Chair, members of the board, Jason Burningham. As was mentioned, we did get several options. One of the primary objectives that we focused on was the ability for the city to pay these early. So the primary difference with the Chase Bank and the Zion's options are that the Chase Bank A option, which has a 4.32% interest rate, is non-callable. So that would mean that there was no optionality for us to prepay any of the bonds prior to the 10 years. If there were other considerations, I guess, in terms of priority, if the city felt like, well, we're going to have these outstanding for at least the 10 years. We know that we're going to amortize it over the 10 years, then interest rate in and of itself would probably be a higher lens to look at. But based on the type of bond this is, the purpose of the bond, really with the economics in mind and trying to facilitate, you know, economic development down there, I really think the call flexibility is one of the more significant reasons why we'd want to go in the direction of either A or B. B was more flexible just because we're not mandated of that $450,000 payment every year. It was only about 338,000. But if we continued to pay it as though we were paying it 450,000, you in essence get the same thing in Option A that, you know-
Because the effective rate is less-
The effective rate.
Because you're not amortizing the life of the interest.
Exactly. But does that answer that?
No, it does. That makes sense. I agree, and I do think that's a high priority for us, and I anticipate we will pay that off early. In a scenario where we don't, we experience a down economy and we hit that 10-year call, you know, 1.7 was the balloon payment. I imagine we can just refinance that. I imagine that's highly, you know, that's likely what would happen and traditionally what happens.
Yeah, that's really typically the structure of these, what we refer to as a 10-year term or a bullet or a balloon payment. They amortize over a longer period of time. But both of, I guess, one consideration is Zion's was not able to locker rate for the full 15 years. So as, in the past, they've given proposals that have been able to do that. You'll note that the other ones that are highlighted in green in this matrix all provided a 15-year fixed rate. But Zion's, the only way they were able to basically provide the equivalent was a 15-year amortization but a 10-year fixed rate. But as you can see, from a call flexibility perspective, Zion's was by far the most flexible. You know, if I could have got Chase Bank Option A completely callable and flexible, then there wouldn't have been any question, we'd be doing the Chase Bank A. You know, similarly, if Webster Bank, they're lower too at 4.76%, but they've got a really unique call feature, meaning we'll let you call bonds, but you've got to pay a premium in order to call it. So, you know, really weighing all of those issues, we said, given that this is a, you know, hopefully a short term, hopefully, we're not holding on this to a long term, having the ability to pay that down sooner was kind of the major lens that we looked through. And, you know, felt like that Option B gave you kind of the best of, if you had to spread it out over 15 years, yes, I think your point is well-taken. We would refinance it before you ever had a balloon payment. But if you paid it like the Option A, you in essence would get the same amortization as you would have otherwise on Option A. Well, I'll be persona non grata here in a couple of weeks, but I prefer the flexibility.
Similar to what we did with our public safety building. It was great to pay it early and save all the interest and-
It's good to have options.
That was a smaller payment, but we were able to pay that off in five years. Yeah, I can't remember the exact amount, but in terms of interest cost savings, it was significant. You know, several hundreds of thousands of dollars, maybe even, you know, pushing a million plus in terms of interest costs that were saved by virtue of that flexibility.
There is some interest rate risk, though. 10 years from now, it could be, you never know. But it would be on that lower balance of 1.7. Roughly 2% to refinance it, you think, cost of issuance?
Yeah, 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 definitely. You know, because of the size of the transaction, I'd say, yeah, you're 2% probably in order to refinance it. So there are costs of issuance that would have to be considered into it. Again, the hope, and I think as we presented this back in October, as I recall, we were really looking at debt service threshold as an annual payment around the 450,000. So Option A fits really in it. Option B just gives us a lot more flexibility, about another 100,000 less annually that we're not mandated to pay.
Right.
But we could easily pay that additional 100, and we would get much lower overall cost. Certainly possibility that we'd go past the 10 years, but the probability is not-
Yeah. Not real, not real high.
Yeah, as disciplined as this group has been historically and currently. I would say a very good response. This, you know, this is indicative of a private placement, so this isn't publicly offered. The public offer transaction might result in a lower interest rate, but we wouldn't have any call flexibility. So that's why the council or RDA decided, let's look at a private placement so that we have that flexibility.
Jason, I would love for you to share with the council, in looking at the debt serviceability based on our annual revenues and whatnot of our sales tax currently, being this a sales tax bond, could you share with the council a little bit the ratios that you look at and the overall risk picture that this is compared to our current financial situation?
Yeah, I think that's, you know, very helpful, probably in light of, an agenda item tonight is a public hearing, a required public hearing relevant to the issuance of the tax increment and sales tax revenue bond, Series 23 bonds. As we evaluate city credit, sales tax being the vehicle that's backstopping in addition to the tax increment that's generated down in 700 North, Linden is, has a debt to individual or debt per capita or a debt to value ratio that would put Linden City in a very high investment-grade category, double A or double A-plus. So the highest is AAA, and the only reason that Linden probably wouldn't be in the AAA has nothing to do with finances, has everything to do with the number of people you have in your city. It's 12,000 people, they look at and say, well, I don't know that we can rate a community with 12,000 people. Now, you've got to take that into account. That's Los Angeles, Salt Lake Cities, Denver, all of these large municipalities that might carry a AAA bond rating. Your finances are proportionally no different, I guess, is what I'm saying, to the highest-grade credits that we would see in the marketplace. And that's by virtue of low debt ratio per capita and a low debt ratio per assessed value. The other component, I think that you mentioned, Madam Chair, Mayor, is the sales tax. And we have a relatively high debt service coverage ratio to the bonds that are outstanding that are supported. You've also prepaid sales tax bonds in the past, and I believe right now we only have one issue of sales tax. And so we have multiple times coverage. Way to think of that is my sales tax that you get in that's pledged towards the debt service versus the annual debt payment. And we have a bond covenant that we would never issue anything that would create something that's less than a two-to-one ratio. So two revenue, you know, $2 of revenue versus $1 of annual debt. Well, we're well in excess of five times or six times.
So that actually figured into the-
Oh, yeah.
Paying it off early that-
Yeah, when we looked at what could you manage, we looked at it and said, there's really no reason to go out 20 years. You've got more than enough debt service coverage. Now, that's not to say that we didn't want to be careful with downturns in the economy, shifts in sales tax. I'm glad that Adam reported a little bit on the month-to-month, year-over-year, what we're seeing in sales tax. But what we're seeing with other communities in Utah is, sales tax has not been at that double-digit clip of what we've seen, you know, probably the last two years. But it's stabilizing and it's actually increasing at a reasonable level. And so, yeah, when we looked at this, we felt like the 10-year, the 15-year, there was no need to go longer than 15-year just because of your ability to service it and very high credit rating. We actually had probably 15 other financial institutions that said, yeah, we'd love to get this, but we're not going to be competitive enough. This is too high-grade of a credit for us. It's too good. Our costs would be too high for you.
Well, thank you for your great work on this, getting us the best option, so.
All right, council, any further questions? All right. Well, we will move on to item number four. This is the public hearing portion of the RDA, so I'd motion, I would, uh, like a motion?
To open a public hearing.
I'll second.
Okay, a motion by Councilmember Broderick, seconded by Councilmember Van Cherry. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we are now in a public hearing and Adam will present some more information.
So this is you acting as the RDA board now considering adoption of this resolution that would effectively approve the purchase of this property um, and allow, uh, the city to execute this contracts for the bond and, um, close and deliver those monies to, to the buyer or to the seller, excuse me.
Adam, that $5 million number sticks out to me. Is there a reason that in our resolution it's $5 million, but in our sources and uses we're at that 3.5, 3.6?
I'm going to defer to Jason on that.
Not to exceed $5 million.
Yeah, it is. So, go ahead.
I'll, I'll address that. Because it's a final bond resolution, you've adopted a parameters resolution already. And you gave notice of the public hearing tonight predicated on the idea that it could not exceed $5 million. Probably the reason that the agenda item mentions that is just because that's how it was noticed. I think, I believe, that you could, uh, adopt the resolution. What we've got filled into the final resolution is the option B numbers.
Okay.
So, um.
That's, that's great. I, I, I appreciate that the decision's being made here tonight by council that it's not being handed off to staff to go up to $5 million. These are the numbers we're moving forward with.
I think, again, the $5 million was because the notice of the public hearing was back to the parameters resolution that said.
Perfect.
You're allowing up to, uh, $5 million. But certainly the, the intent of the resolution is, I think it's $3,579.
Yeah, we'll, we'll need to amend that because it actually does say the $5 million in, in the, the body of the resolution. And part of, part of why that may have been the case is I spoke with Cindy from our bond council. Um, we were uncertain of which, uh, you would pick tonight. And so she felt like just going to this, what, what was approved in the resolution originally, not to exceed that was maybe the safe way instead of just leaving a blank there. So if that makes sense, because you, you could have picked one of these other lending options, which wouldn't have been that, the same dollar amount, so.
Yeah, so that was interesting. Yeah, Cindy's perspective, maybe that's interesting. I would look at it and say of, you know, we have eight options. All eight options were $3,579 to $3,588, you know.
That's correct, so maybe I misunderstood her.
So, but in either event, what I, we've done these several times. I think as part of, you know, you hold the hearing, get comments and input. But part of the resolution, you could just make a note that you're selecting option B, the Zion's Bank option B, in the amount of $3 million, can't quite read it very well, but $3,579 with the terms that have been presented to us, you know.
All right, and just one other thing to note. This is a sales tax backstop based on what he said are extremely excellent sales tax revenues historically and also the cover, what we're going for debt-wise is, is a small risk ratio. Um, so we are not going to need to, you know, have a fee or a tax upon the residents. This is well within the scope of, you know, our annual budget, um, that we maintain as a city. So, um, with that being said, this is a public hearing. And so if we have any questions or comments from the public, this would be the time that we would invite you to come forward.
Lincoln and Cole, you're only public for two more, I mean, for 30 more days. There was ever a time.
I've expressed opinions in the past, I think, so I'm, I'm good. This looks wonderful.
Thanks, guys. You two young men here have any comments? Are you here with scouts? Is that what you're here for?
Another agenda item.
Just hanging out today.
Awesome. We appreciate you being here.
Couldn't think of anything better to do than be here once.
Wow, that's sad.
No, I think that's great.
That's awesome.
Hey, this is a great place to sit and observe. What do you mean?
Lincoln's been here for a long time.
Last two years. I'll, I'll move to close the public hearing seeing no comments.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Hoyt, seconded by Councilmember Powell. All in favor to close the public hearing?
Aye.
All right, bringing this back to you then, um, council, um, let's see.
Are you ready for a motion?
Ready for a motion, yes.
I move that we approve resolution number 2023-7-RBA. Uh, as, as written with the exception that we will actually plug the number at $3,759.
$579.
Or $579, pardon me, as presented tonight and based on the option B that we've chosen.
I will, I will second the motion.
All right, uh, any further discussion on the motion? Didn't want to cut anyone off too soon.
You know, with my second, I would, I would just add, I appreciate what was presented here. I, I look over to Mike who has 40 years and plus in, in lending myself, who does that on my full-time job. And, and I look at that rate, I look at, I, I think this is a, especially in the current interest rate environment. I look at those rates and that's a lot better than I thought we would end up at. I appreciate that. I love the flexibility. I really got, I love the route we've gone. Um, you know, we had public hearing on the sale of the property last time and had nothing but positive, uh, things to say. Nothing here tonight on, on this. I, I really, um, I appreciate the way we've gone about it and, and so comfortable with my, my second.
Yeah, appreciative of your professionalism and, and guiding us, guiding us through this. It's really been helpful to, to answer the questions and to help us to understand all the implications. So I echo Jake's words. Thank you.
All right, so we do have a, a motion on the table by Councilmember Van Cherry, seconded by Councilmember Hoyt. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
All right, the motion carries. Thank you so much, Jason. We really appreciate all the good work and service you've done for Linden City over many examples such as this tonight and coming down.
Thanks, Jason.
All right. All right, we have, now I would entertain a motion to adjourn and reconvene to our Linden City Council meeting.
I will make that motion.
All right, so moved. We have a second?
Second.
All right, motion to adjourn and reconvene the Linden City Council meeting made by Councilmember Van Cherry, seconded by Councilmember Broderick. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that sounds unanimous. Okay, so back to our Linden City Council agenda. Um, we are now on item number nine. Uh, this is a review and action item, uh, for the adoption of a resolution um, authorizing the execution of the sales tax agreement. All right, so I'll turn this over to Adam.
So in conjunction to the action that you just took with the RBA as functioning as the RDA board, this is now the resolution to move forward as the city council and adopt the resolution authorizing, uh, the approval of the sales tax agreement. So this is backstopping anything that the RDA can't, um, pay for with city sales tax revenues. Anything else?
No, that's great. It just, I think the mayor already mentioned.
We would like to catch you on the mic. Thank you so much.
Here's already stressed this point, but, um, in order to secure this financing that we talked about um, and secure the rates that are very good, I agree with that. Um, the sales tax as a backstop was a big credit factor. So the, the purchasers looked at this and said, well, just on the tax increment alone, we might not have provided as good a interest rate. And so really the sales tax is, is a component here that's an important, uh, backstop, credit enhancement. But that's what achieved all of the proposals or responses that we got.
I know you've provided this information, Jason, but, uh, would you just remind us of the timeline? Assuming everything's passed tonight and it's moving forward.
Great.
Remind us again of the, the timeline and.
Yeah, perfect, yeah. So we are, uh, we're accelerated. Um, we heard from Zion's Bank, um, earlier just that, uh, they, they didn't think they were going to be able to close by December 7th, assuming you, uh, you know, adopted on December 4th. But they did say they could close on December 13th. So this is an accelerated, still an accelerated closing calendar. Um, really with this, uh, motion and, and adoption, uh, bond council will drop everything in. Um, legal documents will be circulated within the day or two and, uh, will be closed. I, I believe on December 13th, monies will be transferred and you'll be able to negotiate or, uh, close on the sale, or excuse me, the purchase of the land, um, probably quickly thereafter, so. And, and our sellers are aware of that?
Yes, yeah, we've been in communication with them. So one item before we leave this is just to bring to your attention that we've, we've found out here just this last week and a half or so, there is some green belt rollback taxes that have to be paid. And Ivory not, is not willing to pay those taxes. And so that is an equivalent of $97,000 where we're required to pay the back taxes for the last five years. And so we would be taking that out of our general fund reserves to pay that to the county. So we are, we're communicating with the county to see if we are holding on to that and not developing it. And we've talked to the Andersons to see if they'd be willing to continue to farm that, if there's some opportunity that we could push that to a future buyer or, uh, even as a tax exempt entity, if we would somehow get out from underneath that. We're exploring that, uh, if we were to hang on to that for, for a certain number of years. But just a heads up, that's an issue.
Is that something you go through with the county commissioners or with the auditor?
Um, I, I think that's the, the assessor's office, yeah.
And the assessor's office is under the auditor's umbrella, is that correct?
I don't know the answer to that.
Um, yeah, it, it would go through the assessor's office. And I think the assessor in Utah County is an elected official. So I don't think they fall under the clerk auditor, yeah.
Yeah, the, the city has been stuck having to pay rollback taxes in the past. We haven't been able to get out from that in a few other circumstances. And so we'll, we'll continue to explore that, but just in FYI, that's an outstanding issue, so.
Jason, do you ever see personal guarantees on this? Mayor said if they dropped our rate another 1%, she'd be willing.
She'd do it. Yeah, no, that's a great thought, but, uh, it probably, I mean, it's probably just as close as, to as good as the sales tax pledge, but, oh, the sales tax pledge is pretty good.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Mayor, I'm ready. I'll, I'll, if, if the council's ready.
Any further discussion? Okay.
I'll move to approve resolution 2023-25-R adopting the final bond resolution and final terms, conditions and provisions related to the issuance of the Series 2023 bond.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Hoyt.
I will second it.
All right, seconded by Councilmember Broderick. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay. Not like the record reflect that I hope this project is, has, is smooth sailing. I just, my feelings are that I would equate this to having, uh, being a little too brave to have an outdoor wedding this time of year. So that's just my only concern, so. That's, that's just the easiest way for me to put it, but please, make it work.
All right, okay, thank you. And we'll move now to item number 10. This is also a public hearing, um, to have a proposal to amend the standard land use table.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing, mayor.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Powell, seconded by Councilmember Hoyt to open the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Nay.
Okay, thank you. We'll have a presentation here by our planner, Mary Barnes. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you. Um, the applicant is here or representatives of the applicant are here. If you guys want to come up, if that's okay. Um, so the applicant today, on behalf of Utah Air Guns, is proposing an ordinance amendment to make indoor gun ranges a conditional use in the heavy industrial zone. Um, currently, they are just not permitted throughout the entire zone. Um, Utah Air Guns is wanting to relocate their business onto, um, approximately 120 South, 1200 West here in Linden. Currently, they have a location in Arm on State Street. You guys can see it if you're going to the mall. Anyways, um, this facility will include a warehouse, a showroom and an indoor gun range for customers. And they provided us with a conceptual site plan of what that site would kind of look like. They've already met with the DRC and, you know, pending, depending on what happens tonight, they'll be able to move forward with plans. And this shooting range and facility will be only used for air-powered guns. No type of, um, firearms or like the more traditional gun types. I'm not a gun person. Anyways, um, currently, the standard land use table conditionally allows indoor gun ranges in all light industrial, mixed commercial and, um, and commercial general zones. So that means pretty much the rest of the industrial area in Linden, um, both sides of the freeway and also all the way down, you know, State Street in the, it's, it's not allowed on 700 North, don't worry. But all down State Street, it is allowed, um, conditionally, I should say. So staff, we're not aware, we, we did some research and we're not aware, um, if there's a reason exactly why heavy industrial, that zone wasn't, like, we don't quite know why indoor gun ranges weren't included as part of, as a use in that zone. Um, kind of what our feeling is that, um, the heavy industrial zone was created specifically for the intensive manufacturing, um, kind of outdoor storage uses. And so they don't have the same flexibility as the light industrial zone. Um, but this type of ordinance amendment would allow indoor gun ranges as conditional. So any indoor gun range that would come in to the heavy industrial area, the planning commission and staff would be able to recommend conditions to help mitigate any potential impacts on surrounding heavy industrial neighbors. Also, I, I do want to mention that this is the first gun range proposal that I'm aware of since the Barnes Bullets Gun Range. That was a, it was a personal gun range up in the, um, corner of the city. And that hasn't been here for years. So just wanted to mention that as well. It doesn't seem to be something that everyone is looking for, especially in this area. But we're really grateful that the airgun people have come with this proposal. Um, it sounds like it would be something that would be really great to diversify Linden's business base and provide a new kind of business for people all around to come and try out these airguns. Seem pretty cool. Anyways, moving on to the general plan. Um, the general plan basically states that the purpose of the high, heavy industrial zone is, as I mentioned, more of these intensive manufacturing uses. But it does say that the application of transitional land uses along the edges of this district will help offset the impacts of heavy industry to adjacent and nearby uses. So this property is the one that they're looking to, um, build on. And that's right on the edge of that heavy industrial use. I'm helping to transition to the lighter industry across the road. And just in conclusion, like I said, we believe that allowing indoor gun ranges as a conditional use will have a minimal impact on the heavy industrial community, specifically because it is conditional and we will be able to mitigate impacts, um, any impacts that will happen on, you know, surrounding properties. Every conditional use permit is noticed, so everyone will be getting letters if it comes through. If, if this is approved tonight, um, Utah Air Guns will have to come back through Planning Commission for a conditional use permit and a site plan as well. And like I said, Utah Air Guns and allowing gun ranges as a conditional use will help Linden to diversify its business base, provide something new and a little bit more experiential, um, than the other uses that are down there right now. And Planning Commission last week unanimously approved it after some discussion. Any, any questions for me or our representatives here today?
Any big takeaways from the Planning Commission?
They.
Unanimously approved. Was there any?
They mostly had questions on how airguns worked, actually. Um, but Mike, Mike Marchbanks, one of his main comments was he doesn't know why it's not already allowed down there. Um, he doesn't understand why that's, you know, not already a thing. So, um, that was a big comment. And then, yeah, they, they had a lot of questions about how Utah Air Guns runs its facilities and, and asked for a tour if they built.
So you're at 953 South State right now in Orem.
Yeah.
Uh, they'll be playing parking here, obviously. They'll have to meet the parking requirements.
Mm-hmm.
Does this include, I haven't had a chance to read off through your website, is this like paintball and is that?
No, no, so, and, and we represent, my name's Kyle Terry. Um, and, and it's great to be here with you tonight.
Thank you.
Um, my name's Kyle Terry. I'm a director for Westland Construction. This is my colleague, Rob Evans. He's a construction manager for Westland Construction as well. Rob Evans, he's a construction manager for Westland Construction as well, the owner couldn't be here tonight, and I apologize for that, but we told we told him we'd be here for you for this. So, um, there are all sorts of caliber of airgun, um, that you can, I mean, it can go from very small pellets to almost, you know, larger calibers. Currently, the facility that they have on State Street, they would be they would be closing that one, I'm pretty sure, for this, they need more space, um, their rapid growth um is they're they're going to become one of the largest airgun suppliers in the nation here pretty soon and and looking for a base. Currently, Justin is the owner, his dad has has owned this property for some time.
That's what I was going to ask, he said they actually acquired the property.
Yeah, yeah, this is their, well, it's their, it's been their property for many years.
This is part of Boyd and Maxine Jacobson's family, I mean, this is their son, Justin.
Yeah, yeah.
And and so they've got, this is longstanding in our community of great business owners, and and Justin's always done a great job, and all the businesses I've ever known him to own, so over the years.
And he's really trying to, I mean, he's trying to make this a very welcoming place, I know, obviously, it's heavy industrial, but a place where, and and the airgun, it's not like a it's not like a dark, adultery, kind of like a ready gunner up on State Street in Orem, this is more of like a novelty type, I mean, if you were to go in there, you'd be like, oh, this is it's kind of like a wild, wild west kind of setup, you can go there and and you can test out some of their guns and shoot their guns, and they they sell, and they don't, there's no manufacturing, this is basically bringing in and then shipping out, plus a storefront.
So some retail sales tax will be generated, we love that.
Actually, quite a bit, if you were to go in there, place is always busy, they have a wonderful, they have a wonderful facility.
I have a few buddies who've been.
Gotten into it, and it's impressive, they they they're able to mount some cameras on some of their guns, and just to see the distance they're able to shoot and the accuracy, it's, they're a lot of fun, I think it's really gaining momentum and and popularity, I've I'm excited that they've chosen Linden to headquarter out of, so.
It's kind of a fun little, it's kind of a fun little facet of a little bit of country, you know, so.
Yeah, no, I agree.
On a different, on a different trajectory.
Yeah, it's a great fit.
I never had trouble shooting my brother with a pellet gun, I got, I drew I drew the line at actual firearms weapons, so this might.
Your brother probably buddies that, because that's, I felt like he was chasing.
They probably have a quite a quite a online presence, I'm guessing.
There's there's a decent, they they do, I I know they do, because I I've looked at their stuff online, but, and like Kyle said, this is going to be a lot of warehouse facility as well.
It's a big building, it's a big retail.
Yeah, it's mostly warehouse.
Did the Planning Commission ask the question, or was it ever presented, the the annual volume of people that visit their facility currently?
I don't have those numbers.
Okay, what about their annual gross sales?
I don't have that either, but I'm sure we could probably get something like that and share it with you.
I know I've financed over the years, and maybe Jake has too, uh, gun ranges, actual gun weapon ranges, and I know they have a very elaborate retrieval system for the for the lead or the copper.
Yeah, they're.
Is this something similar, do they have to, how do they?
Yeah, they have, there's 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 a backstop, obviously, for the lead that they have to that they have to retrieve, um, airguns don't put off the the gases that as traditional firearms do, so they don't have to have the ventilation systems for that, um, but but yeah.
So a lot of fun. Yeah, I'm ready.
All right, any further questions, council?
I'm just excited that if for this to come to town, make sure Justin understands that.
Well, this is a public hearing, um, so do we have any questions or comments from the public? Guys, do you want to comment? Say yes, vote yes for this, council.
There you go.
I'll make a motion then that we close the public hearing.
All right, thank you, we have a motion by Councilmember Hoyt.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Broderick, all in favor to close the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, that is unanimous, all right, council, bringing this back to you then for this land use table amendment.
I think it's awesome, make a motion unless there's more discussion.
Let's do it.
I move to approve ordinance amendment twenty twenty-three dash twenty-three dash O as presented.
Second.
All right, thank you, we have a motion by Councilmember Powell, seconded by Councilmember Hoyt, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that is unanimous, we would let your owner know, we're thrilled to have them, and have another great business in Linden.
We want to have the tour too, when the planning commission has to.
Shoot, shoot and try out the the place.
Absolutely, we'll make it a great time, thank you.
And you're a baseball fan, the chief somehow had some back knowledge, but he said Bo Jackson was there a couple weeks ago buying some airguns, so.
He was, and I was there, and it was awesome. That guy is a specimen. As as Councilmember Powell said, this family is is awesome.
Top-notch.
You're going to see great things come from this, so thank you.
Great, thank you, we look forward to the site site plan moving through as well for the build-out. Okay, item number eleven, this is a discussion and work item regarding the commercial farm zone, um, we'll have a a brief presentation, and then we'll invite, I can see any comment from that in a minute, okay, go ahead.
All right, thanks, Mayor, council members, um, if you remember back in June, the council heard a number of applications regarding Wadley Farms and some ordinance amendments for bed and breakfast, site plan approvals, conditional use permits, all all that fun stuff, um, at that time, the council removed amplitheaters from the allowable list of conditional commercial uses, uh, you also asked us to look at maybe tightening up the ordinance a little bit, and so, um, I spent some time with the Planning Commission and, you know, gave them the meeting YouTube video to watch, and, uh, so in November, we had a discussion with the Planning Commission on on a couple items, uh, first, that about ensuring the forty percent open space slash agricultural requirements in the commercial farm zone remains the primary focus, um, we also talked about the list of conditional uses or commercial conditional uses, and whether we thought anything should happen with that, then, um, those those were the two main categories, so that forty percent requirement and the discussion with the Planning Commission, um, they felt like the forty percent requirement was a good agricultural standard, uh, they actually only can't said that they would recommend one change to that, they, and it was very minor, they they said that they would rather see the word, um, let's see, let me find that real quick, um, that the word profit be changed to revenue, um, that was the change that they recommended on that, um, regarding the fourteen allowable conditional uses, um, they they recommended that those uses, they felt that 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 it didn't need to be tightened up, they felt like it was self-regulating, um, now, just so you are aware, we, and so we're all on the same page, that those fourteen uses, a property owner could come in and ask for conditional use permit approval for, you know, all fourteen uses, we don't, we don't regulate that anyway. Now, the Plan Planning Commission felt like that was self-regulating by the parking, by the forty percent open space, they recommended no changes to that. One of the things we talked about as well is that the ordinance says, and I think this was just, uh, how it was written, that there was probably a, just a maybe an oversight on this a little bit, um, but the the ordinance does say that you can't cover more than forty percent of the acreage or the parcel or the lot in buildings, and so, you know, you could cover a lot of that property in buildings, now, um, talking with Mr. College, I think the intent was that you couldn't, you had to, you couldn't cover, the the forty percent only applied to the non-agricultural areas, um, so the forty percent had to remain forty percent agriculture, the buildings could only be on the other sixty percent, um, so we we may want to look at tightening that up a little bit.
Do you understand that right, that that was the strike? That would be forty percent of the sixty percent?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Yep, that'd be correct.
That's what the intent should be, is forty percent of the sixty percent.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Yep, um, and so tho- those were the the main things we talked about at Planning Commission, I did provide you a list of options if you wanted to look at those uses, those condition, those fourteen conditional uses, um, you know, on, I gave you five options you could look at if you felt so inclined on how to regulate those further, whether it's by building square footages, um, whether it's regulating just the overall number of uses, regulating the acreage by use, uh, or the use by acreage, or looking at something like our animal code that was brought up, um, at the at one of the meetings, so with that, I I would be glad to answer twenty questions and have some additional discussion, um, one, sorry, one of the other items the Planning Commission recommended was that the forty percent agricultural requirement comes after the conditional uses, and so they said, maybe we move that up above the commercial uses, so it's the focus of the ordinance, and maybe writing something in the ordinance that that make, you know, that that should be the primary focus, and so.
Thank you, Michael, are there any other issues that staff felt council should deliberate upon, maybe, um, besides those that were discussed that night, or what's being recommended forward by the Planning Commission?
No, I I think just always making sure we're protecting the neighborhood, that was one of the focuses, if if we have any additional, you know, the comment was made, we we love these, you know, but how do we make sure the the next ones are just as good as the two that we have, and how do we make sure that agricultural use is the is the focus, and so, um, I I think those were the main main concerns from from city staff, and and whether or not we, or I think I already said this, but whether or not there should be any type of cap or something to on those commercial uses.
And I agree with, I. Sorry, I agree with the fact that the focus needs to be paramount and forward on this, whatever we can do to, nice fun little language here or there, that it needs to say that the focus is the agriculture, not to say that those who are already participating in this don't get that, but it's an outsider that might come in and try to read what we've got going here, like to make sure that they all understand that.
I think most of the commercial uses are kind of adjunct to the agricultural components, are they not?
Um, I don't know.
Not all of them.
Yeah.
I know you do the the what, the wine, or I'm not sure.
Grape juice?
Grape juice, yeah, grape juice.
New wine.
Wine of the vine.
I mean, they they all have an agricultural use, right, the the Jorgensen's, they take their alpacas, they make yarn out of the the.
How does shearing?
Shearing, yes, thank you for that help, and so, um, but but yeah, what what do we what do we do to protect that?
All right, please introduce your name for the record.
Alan College, owner of Wadley Farms.
All right, Alan, I know you had a letter that you shared, and and maybe you want to, uh, share any additional thoughts or comments, as this is a discussion item and work item for the council to deliberate, the recommendation from the Planning Commission.
Yes, um, I was intimately involved with Adam in the development or writing of the commercial farm zone, and its foremost purpose, as you begin with the end in mind, was the preservation of agricultural production, and as it evolved, we needed to have some way in which, of course, you could augment that agricultural production to preserve it from erosion, from urban expansion, uh, and as we talked to the Planning Commission, it became evident that there's two separate buckets of for Linden, one is that there is a definite desire to preserve open space, and then separate of that is a separate bucket of the commercial farm zone for dedication for agricultural production, and what we didn't want to do is get the cart before the horse, where somebody used the commercial farm zone as a guise to put in to a residential area, a commercial entity of which they have the items listed that they could do those enterprise, and and so, as as pointed out, the us and the Jorgensen's are already there, and so we're grandfathered, but going forward, if you had an applicant sitting here today and had five acres, um, and said, even though those five acres have never been in production, they have two horses and they could sell one of the horse, then that too would qualify as a commercial farm zone, as it's currently written. And so, as I've written to you, if the primary purpose is agricultural production, and that threshold has to be met, and for someone to be able to apply, that becomes an arduous burden for the city council or the Planning Commission to to define, uh, it also, we had in the commercial farm zone, the wording that it's managed in such a way that there's reasonable expectation of profit, and, uh, as I said, they want to do away with the word profit and say revenue, well, then, as, you know, Mr. Hawes in trying to enforce or that somebody really did produce a any revenue, and that simply lowers the threshold for anyone with five acres could easily, I think, qualify as a commercial farm zone, putting the burden.
They can have revenue, but not necessarily profit.
That's right, and and how do you then not be accused of discrimination as the city council, if you define that, so, coming back, as I wrote, it seems to me that the way in which that can be easily justified is that you simply add the word five acres of green belt, and as, uh, as pointed out, the state, it's been going on since nineteen sixty-nine, to be able to preserve farm land in Utah has the green belt status, and this is enforced by the Utah County, and they make certain with the board that what land you're applying for to have this tax exemption of green belt, and the minimum is five acres, is that they determine by what it is that you have produced or going to produce by a board, and then you have to meet those thresholds, so I need to report each year, it's not having the city come and say, did you make a profit or any revenue, I have to be accountable to the county in order to maintain that green belt status, and anyone comply retroactively for that green belt status, you simply have had to have had your land in production for two prior years, which I think satisfies the cause that you are an agricultural entity that is producing agricultural products, it's not just a guise to be able to use that as a commercial venture.
Alan, could you help my ignorance here, and that is that I've heard that this county was tweaking the the acreage number for green belt, is there any truth in that?
Yes, there's an urban farm designation now, you can have less than five acres designated green belt currently.
Thought I'd heard that, thank you, so, okay.
That was adopted last year. Okay, all right, so, thank you.
I guess I wonder how that would then affect, how how far down, how how little acreage you need, and I'd heard it had gone down to just two acres or an acre and a half or something like that, so.
It has some strict requirements of, you're showing that it's a profit venture as well, so the idea was that some of the the county wants to make sure that in preserving open space and small farm, you know, things when people need to make a parcel for a child to build a home or something, they're not falling under that five acre green belt and having the commercial, uh, the rate, excuse me, clawback, that we.
Okay, the boost.
Yeah, those clawbacks have been quite significant, and so what happens is some of those that were doing some agricultural production then say, well, then I just have to sell and develop the whole piece.
Right.
To pay my back clawback taxes, um, so to incentivize that, they do have, um, a smaller designation can be applied for.
Okay, so, since this is not.
As far as size.
Not much that I know on this, other than just hearing about it, I'm grateful that you know more information, is we can make sure that you incorporate, you we, it gets incorporated, that that mindset, so into that, so, thank you.
Thank you for the question, any other questions, council? Well, we, uh, this is just a discussion and work item regarding the recommendations from staff, and and it was already discussed by the Planning Commission, um, any further insights there?
No, I'd just like, you know, if you can provide me some direction, how you want to maybe move forward on some of these, uh, things that we talked about, the, you know, strengthening the forty percent requirement, the number of conditional uses, if you want to regulate those in in any way, regulate the number, regulate them by building square footage, by acreage, or, and then the, like I said, I think we should amend the ordinance for that forty percent building coverage requirement as well.
Okay, and then, uh, Mr. College's point too, he's bringing up the revenue versus profit, um, specific language too, um, so all those items, so this is just a point of feedback for staff, this is not adopting a change to the ordinance, you would bring that back at a later time, um, so they're just looking for direction on our thoughts on these various points.
I would just make sure that whatever we can do to not be arbitrary or capricious about this revenue versus profit, that kind of language that we're, that it's some sort of a matrix, that however we structure that, that it can be easily defined, not, don't need an apicus to. that it can be easily defined, not, don't need an appicus to figure that one out.
I mean, the planning commission just wanted to change the one word.
Yeah, and I think it needs to be more detailed than that personally.
How are you verifying the revenue or profit?
We don't.
Yeah. What's interesting, I, I, I tend to agree. I think profit makes more sense because, I mean, you do one thing and you can consider revenue. You could sell something on Facebook Marketplace and say, hey, I have revenues.
Revenue, yeah.
I like the idea of profits, but I, I am curious what the mechanism is for us to.
So to Councilmember Powell's point, and now Councilmember Hoyt, I'd like to ask our legal counsel, Brian Hawes, would there be, if we had, say, you must have some sort of a, an enterprise, an agricultural enterprise prior, like he's mentioning, for that designation?
Yeah, it's really going to come down to, kind of like we do with a lot of our ordinances, it's going to come back to complaint-based issues. If an issue arises, we're going to go in and we're going to review, make sure they're complying with the ordinance. And, and again, it's going to be really scrutinized in the application process. But, but you're, you're right, Jake, we're, we're not going to be spending a whole lot of time and resources on reviewing, you know, financial reports every year and, and going through it like that. But it does give us an instrument to use if a problem arises. So.
The only, the only, well, the challenge that I see is, again, we're not here to get this deep in the weeds, but you know as well as I do, Jake, that I, I've lent to many businesses that don't show a profit, but they, you know, when you do all of your add backs with your depreciation, your amortization, your, um, excess owner's compensation, I mean, there's all sorts of things for, for tax planning purposes that smart business people do to either minimize or show a, a negative profit. And again, maybe I'm just too deep into the weeds on that, but, but when you say profit, I.
And sometimes it takes time to get a venture going.
That's right. You see where I'm headed with that, though. I mean, we could say profit.
Your write-offs and everything against it.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. You could be very, cash flow wise, you could be very well and very healthy, but from a profit standpoint, I mean, it's, it's your American duty to pay as few taxes as you can. At least that's what my daddy used to tell me.
Well, I, I think that burden by adopting green belt is taken care of by the county, because this is out of the county website, that, this is quote, "The productive value is determined by the Utah State Tax Commission with the assistance of a five-member Farmland Assessment Advisory Committee and Utah State University. The productive values apply statewide and are based on income and expense factors associated with agricultural activities. These factors are expressed in terms of value per acre for specific land classification." And so that takes all this nebulous discussion of enforcement.
Yeah, and it may very well, like I said, I, I just, I just thought to bring it up if we were going to get technical, but it sounds like there's some wiggle room there.
Well, to me, it sounds, again, if you adopted the green belt definition, then then all that burden is placed upon the county.
That's right.
What's your thoughts on that, Michael?
So I, I just, I've listened to the YouTube video numerous times from June nineteenth, when the council just, you know, was, was discussing this. And you're, the only thing I have is that, that the comments that were made at that time were that, you know, you didn't want to discourage someone from not being able to do one of these because they didn't have a, a green belt for the past two years. And so that, that was the only thing I, you know, I want to bring up. Because that, you, you, you discussed this last time, but had some concerns, um, in, you know, maybe eliminating some of the potential properties from this.
Is it possible to put some sort of a time parameter on it? It doesn't have to, maybe some sort of graduation, by year five, you have to be doing certain things? Or that they can amp up to that? Or, I mean, I'm just shooting from the hip here, not that that's a solution, but.
Yeah, Randy, we're, we're, this is a land use ordinance, not a tax ordinance. We certainly have that ability to, to take and choose those portions of a definition that we like. And, and, and so that's, there's a lot of room for discussion there.
Thank you. My additional concern would be, do we want to have all those fourteen be available to them? Or do we want to say you can choose five of the fourteen? Or I don't know. Is that of any concern to anybody? I don't want to prohibit people, but.
Maybe that intensity, if someone really did all, that's the question. I guess the planning commission felt like, well, the requirements for parking and such, but potentially if someone stacked with those uses start to become too intense and impact the residential neighborhood, that was a discussion item.
I just, I, I, I'm just wanting us to look as far as, into the future as we can, so we don't have unintended consequences, both negative and on the property owner and negative on the neighbors. So that's just why I'm counseling with the counselors.
For example, are, are you familiar with the fourteen uses? And do you know how many Wadley Farms currently?
Adam and I wrote these, and you know, that was before the days of terminology of woke and Israeli wars. I mean, if we would have known the future, we would have done things a whole lot different and bought a lot more land in Linden. But we put in there at that time that caretakers or farm help accessory dwelling, commercial horse stables, farmer's market, greenhouses, plant or garden nursery, garden center, bed and breakfast, guest room units, educational programs and associated facilities, reception centers, conference centers, boutique, cafe, restaurant, veterinary clinic, and food manufacturing. And so all of those may be in the future for what it is that we have, have with this twenty acres, as.
You could do all of those on your twenty acres and some, whether they overlap. You know, you have plenty of parking, in my opinion, to be able to, because of the different time options. I've seen education happen at yours, at your facility, you grow things. I mean, it's just, you check all of those off on some degree or another, I guess. So fourteen was not going to be too many, apparently.
But if someone had only five.
Acres.
And they could potentially pick all fourteen, do you want to have a certain number that they can select of uses, commercial uses, based on acreage?
That you get more, the more acreage, the more opportunities, I should say, the more acreage you have? Which is self-limiting, just by the fact of land in Linden.
I think if they have five acres compared to twenty, that almost is.
Limiting.
Yeah, that's self-regulating. I don't, I don't see that you'd, if you had five acres, that it's very likely that you'd have all fourteen uses.
Yeah, you'd have to remember that of the five acres, only three are designated, well, three are designated for your buildings and parking, as you well know.
The forty percent has to be.
Urban centers, that pretty well eats it up.
Seems to be self-regulating. I don't know that I'd be too concerned with.
Thank you for just discussing it with me.
Gardens center, so I, since, you know, Mr. Cowie has been really involved in fashioning this ordinance, which is fantastic, I would love to know your thoughts, Adam, about some of these points.
Um, you know, my recollection of this, it was largely, oh, thanks. When the council adopted this years ago, I think there was largely, uh, working with Alan, the intent was to preserve open space and agricultural uses. And allowing some sort of business activities to help offset the costs of, of keeping those open spaces. I don't, I don't think that, my opinion, the, the intent of the ordinance was never, how can we make somebody make a lot of money and profit off of a business in this residential zone? That wasn't the intent. And so it was, how can we allow them to do something to help offset the cost of keeping this open space or farm? To supplement it. But it wasn't, how can we run a business and grow and, and become, multiple businesses in this residential zone? I don't, that, that's my opinion of, of the original intent of the, of the ordinance was preserve open space and agricultural uses by allowing something, something to supplement that. I, I'll be honest, I, I remember Bruce Carpenter was one of the city council members and, and had made a comment, unfortunately, it's not in the minutes, but I had made a comment about, we probably need to look at this number of uses. And so this, this has been an issue before, um, with, with prior elected officials, but we never quite envisioned that somebody would have all fourteen. I don't, I don't think that was ever in my mind.
Adam, I actually remember that. I was in, I was in the audience, just like Cole and Lincoln was, when that was all being discussed, watching that happen as a, a, what do they call it? An elected, elected official? Elect, elect, anyway, council member elect at that time. And I remember Bruce kind of saying that concern, and that's why it kind of has resonated with me. Do we need to? But I don't know that we do. It's just a question.
That's, so, does that help, Mayor? That's my, my recollection of, of the purpose of the ordinance. And certainly it was Alan at the time had approached, approached the city and was saying, hey, we need to do something to keep our business ventures going so that we can keep this open space. Um, and so we, we started from there.
All right, council, any other further questions or discussion or direction for staff? So that they can put together any of this potential tightening of the language or the ordinance itself? This is our opportunity. We only revisit things like this periodically every so, so many years. So.
So maybe we can just start forty, the forty percent agricultural, agricultural requirement, move that up in the ordinance a little more, maybe add some wording that that's supposed to be the primary focus.
Every time the word agriculture has, make it bold. Just teasing.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. College.
Thank you. Thanks for your service. Appreciate it.
Question for you, when is the Red Barn opening? When we go get a donut or an apple cider or something like that, ice cream?
I don't have the kids here. The old man's headed off to Papua New Guinea for two years. So I don't know what will happen.
You've come from the FTC today?
No, no, I, I finished that and our medical training. First of all, October, we're waiting for our visas. They were supposed to come today. So Chris checks it three times, but it did come.
Well, congratulations.
Yeah, well, thank you. Thank you for your support. Excuse me.
Two.
Two years. Fun, funny venture.
We'll see you in two years then. Thanks, Alan, for all you do.
One of my favorite things at the Linden Farmer's Market is there's a vendor that comes and makes apple slushies, fresh squeezed apple slushies, oh, to die for. So. Okay, go ahead.
So, yeah, agriculture is, move that up, make, add some wording to that. Uses, what, what would you like to do with the, the uses? Is there something mechanism that you would like us to look at for regulating the number of uses?
Well, I mean, I think we would rely on staff, just kind of knowing what you know when someone comes, an applicant comes in for one of those uses, what sort of, what they're going to have to be required to do, you know, to meet the building size, parking size. I think one thing that we need to maybe clarify is sometimes I could see a user coming and saying, well, in the daytime, we use the parking stalls for X. In the nighttime, we use the parking stalls for another one. And that's where maybe intensity could be increased of uses. And if they're able to combine parkings, not have separate parking or, in your opinion, do we need to have some clarification around that?
And then we, we have a shared parking ordinance that, that we can use. So I, I noted that, may, maybe we look at some, some other additional requirements for some of these uses.
Case in point, though, if it's, if it's indeed, say, just the minimum five acres, okay, with your requirement for open space, with the restrictions on the amount of building square footage you can have relative to the size of the parcel, it, I don't see that anyone's going to come in and want to do a bed and breakfast on that. They may have a boutique there that, that sells souvenirs or sells, I mean, they may have a combination of multiple uses in one, one facility. But I, I can hardly see all fourteen. We, we run the danger of having all fourteen, because how, how many do we even have in the city? We talked about that the last time. How many possible areas do we even have in the city that could qualify for this? So it was only like two, wasn't it?
It's a little bit of an unknown. It would be similar to what, I, I guess it's the unknown because Walker Farms picked up properties around it to actually make this happen. And so.
Yeah.
Could, could you have some open space and somebody buys up four or five neighbors' homes? And then comes in and says, yeah, I want to do this?
Probably the Fortons could do it on their property if they decided that, yeah. I mean, I'm just saying that, that coin too, but possibility.
I think to the mayor's point, from something that I've talked with Mike a little bit about, it's that intensity of use. And so if you're looking at the reception center, and yeah, I've got three hundred people coming in the next three hours, and there's cars coming and going during that timeframe, it would be, I guess, my concern as, as a, somebody that would be concerned about the residential character of that neighborhood, is if they're trying to do other businesses or uses during other hours so that they can maximize and bring in that two or three hundred people every three hours, all day long. And so that, that's kind of what we're seeing, I think, in Alan's, is he's saying, hey, I've got the, the uses at night that are full, but during the day, they're really not doing much. So he's going to put in a restaurant or a boutique, or he's going to venture out and do the, the bed and breakfast or the guest houses, the short-term rentals. He's, he's ventured further, I think, than, than what I had envisioned, certainly, on that property. Not, not to discredit, he's got a beautiful product, and I think everybody here realizes that. And so, but could that happen on the five acre piece? Probably. And, and not as many uses, maybe, but the intensity of use on Walker Farms. Could he continue to do, so right now, he's got at least two uses. He's got the reception center and a retail boutique and the bed and breakfast.
Walker?
Walker, I'm sorry.
Walker Farms.
So, so he's got the two uses. Could he, could he do something else? I don't know. But I, that's the question for you guys, is, is what you're seeing or what could be anticipated, okay?
But he could do, he's got one of those properties, there's a home on Center Street. They, they could probably convert that into a short-term rental. Um, it's got tenants in it right now, just regular renters. So.
So that's the question. Does it, in a sense, self-regulate itself as the planning commissioners thought? Just because for certain uses, you still have to maintain forty percent pure agricultural, and the remaining sixty percent can only have up to forty percent of improved area? That's including parking and buildings? Is that correct? Okay.
Sorry, I meant, sorry, I was writing.
Forty of the sixty, so the, the amount that's left over after the agricultural forty percent, that sixty percent, we're, the ordinance already states only forty percent of the remaining sixty. We do want that clarification.
Yes.
Can have parking lot or building structures.
Yeah, because right now, the ordinance just says you can have up to forty percent of the lot.
Which could be the whole. Okay. So council, is that a, a direction you'd like staff to have?
The forty of the sixty being included, that language.
That's clarified. Okay. And with that being said, do you feel comfortable that in, in essence, those fourteen uses are somewhat inhibited based on the size of the aggregated property? Or does there need to be further look at that?
Like I said, I think they're self-regulating.
I think as long as that, we, we, since we struck out the amphitheater use, that's the one to me that always had the most potential to be a problem to the, to, to neighboring residents. I think it's probably manageable.
All right. Anything else you need? All right, very good. Thank you so very much for your thoughtfulness on this. All right, we're going to go to item number twelve. This is also a public hearing. It's a subdivision ordinance amendment.
I'll make a motion to open a public hearing, Mayor.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Powell. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Broderick. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're now in a public hearing, and we'll turn the time back over to Mr. Florence.
Give me just a second.
Hopefully, these are somewhat housekeeping items, just to get us in compliance with state code. The ever-changing legislative, legislature. We're just recovering from the last legislative session, and they're about to start the next one.
Yes, and I was in a, I was in a webinar last week on the, on this same issue, on this subdivision code, and they said, expect to make changes to it again next year. So.
Whippleish.
We'll, we'll continue to see it. So, the legislature passed two bills last year, Senate Bill 174 and House Bill 406. I wanted to go through Senate Bill 174 quickly. So, what it basically changes is our subdivision code and, and it changes who can review subdivisions and what types of subdivisions. So, these changes have to be adopted by February first, 2024. It prohibits the city council from reviewing subdivisions for single-family home developments, townhomes, and two-family home developments. And so, under our city code, that only allows the council then to review commercial developments or commercial subdivisions or condominium plats. And I'm gonna get to that a little bit more.
What about master development agreements?
So, that, that would be different.
Right. So that would also be an exception.
Well, you could still review development agreements.
Okay.
Yes.
You couldn't review the plats after you approve an agreement.
All right, thank you.
And so, one of the things we also wanna talk to you about is, under our code right now, seventeen dot zero eight dot zero nine zero, it says the city council basically can review any application. So, so for example, if an application was coming through, I would tell you about it. You could say, oh, we want to review that. And you, the planning commission would become the recommending body. The city council becomes the final land use authority. So let's say a site plan wanted to come through, you wanted to see it. That would then make the planning commission the recommending body, the council, the final approval body. We're, we're going, I wanna talk to you about getting rid of that requirement. The state legislator, the state legislature has really focused a lot over the last through, last few sessions. And Cameron Deal said they're gonna focus on this again next year and the following years, trying to separate that administrative authority from the legislative authority. And so, site plan approvals, conditional use permits, subdivisions, those are really considered administrative authorities or approvals. We have, and the way they are is we, we have requirements in our ordinances for, let's say, a subdivision. We already have a frontage requirement. We have a lot size requirement. We have, you know, road width requirements. We have commercial design standards. And so, that's applying those requirements as, in the administrative role. And so, under this table here. What, what we're, what we're saying in updating seventeen oh nine as part of this whole process is making the planning commission that final land use authority for all administrative land use applications and then striking the council's ability to basically call those up. One of the reasons for that also is that, you know, it leaves you in your administrative role. It, it, you'd still keep the authority to do ordinance amendments, zone changes, general plan amendments, development agreements. But it, but it gives the planning commission that, that role as the final authority.
So just to be clear, if it's something that's meeting the current code, we will no longer see those or we can no longer call those up for review. But if the applicant is trying to have a conditional use within that or a zone change, those will still come up through the.
A zone change, yes, not a conditional use.
Conditional uses, just, just staff will determine if a condition?
No, planning commission.
Planning commission.
Yeah, so this is our table here. It's a little hard to see, but this, this says who is the final land use authority on all of these? And then who's the appeal, appeal authority? So on a bunch of these, you're the appeal authority. You're taking, again, that administrative role or a judicial role and becoming that appeal authority. And we're saying, you know, that would be better with the board of adjustment, it being that appeal authority. We want to come back to you in the near future and discuss, again, an administrative law judge, that the administrative law judge would be that appeal authority. But for right now, we're saying the board of adjustment on this. So, Brian, do you have anything you wanna?
No, I, I just think that, that by making this adjustment, we are, are complying with the state's intent in the modifications that they made. So I, I think it's our safe approach.
So my question is, well, and comments I'm hearing up here is, again, legislators who are developers.
Yes.
Continue to hack away at local land use decisions and authority and they don't give opportunities for the public to come in and see what's going on. My question is, we as elected officials, how do we allow for some transparency to our citizens of what's coming, you know, development that's coming and have an opportunity for any feedback in this process? They're trying to eliminate the feedback.
And to that point, Mayor, this just makes me feel like the, the state is trying to make it so that the elected officials cannot, who are representing the citizens, cannot have that opportunity to shape the communities and which these developments are coming into. So I guess that's where I take umbrage with those legislators as developers.
Well, who thinks pushing that agenda?
Now, now, one way, you still, you still have a primary role. You know, like, let's say, for example, the Thornton property. They have to have a zone change on that. And so, they don't get anywhere except for 20,000 square foot lots unless they come into you and get a zone change first. And so, that, that's where you really have the, still have that impact is whether or not you wanna change an ordinance or change a zone.
Correct.
And then the planning commission, they're just administering what you're, what you're changing. And so, it still has to go, any major changes still have to go through you. The, the planning commission can't go rogue on some design, you know, of a street or something without, you know, you changing your standards or, you know, or changing its own, or changing its own.
I think that it just makes that much more important. The appointments by the elected officials to the planning commission have to be even more, I don't wanna say scrutinized, but more vetted. I mean, more, 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 more along the lines of, across the body of, of the elected officials so that they also are reflecting the flavor and the, and the sensitivity of the, the cities and our particular city, so.
So much more responsibility there.
Yep.
And really making sure your ordinances mean what you want them to mean as well. And so.
And right now, sometimes the ordinances have a little flexibility in them. And we've been, over the years, trying to create more clarifications where there's ambiguity. And so, I guess I'm just trying to understand how this really plays out in regards to... So when I, if I recall, when zone changes come, sometimes the entire plan that developer might have isn't fully fleshed out. And so, how do we get to that point where we can have some commitments or discussions about, okay, this is what we're gonna wanna see and this is, you know, to keep... I, I think of past projects where it's really been a process to be like, oh, my goodness, you need to do this or that, or let's give and take on certain things. I mean, we're gonna have... And don't they have in the statute also limit on how many meetings you can have in regards to these?
So for subdivisions, it says you can have, you can hold one public hearing. Now, we don't hold public hearings for, for subdivisions. We hold public meetings. And so, that, that doesn't really apply in this situation.
But can you continue the same meeting?
So at least on the surface, is the intent, it, it just streamlines the approval process? It takes away another layer of oversight?
I would say there's a little more to that.
Makes it easier for them.
They don't like that public clamor has affected some projects not going through that are high density.
Yeah.
There is, I think there's both of what you said.
Both.
But in some cities, I, I will tell you, Linden is already streamlined. And in a large part, we are way ahead of the curve. There are some cities that you have to come before the planning commission and the city council multiple times to get an approval. So you'll come for preliminary subdivision approval, planning commission and council, and then come back and have to get, after you go through all the staff projects, you have to come back for a final approval, planning commission and council. And so, some of these developers in the cities, they legitimately, I think, have a decent gripe where they've said, I've been before the city council two or three times and before the planning commission two or three times and you're taking public comment every single meeting and you're changing things every single meeting. And, and so I can see where they're frustrated with some of those cities. Linden, years ago, we said one, one meeting in planning commission or one with city council, there might be things that you continue for, for legitimate reasons, but it wasn't required. And so, my, my brother actually did a project like 10 years ago in Lehigh and it took us six months just to get out of the staff DRC, the Development Review Committee, of having to come back and answer their questions multiple times. And they would schedule an agenda just to come meet with their staff. And again, this was probably 14, 15 years ago. But it, it was frustrating to me, having been in, in this field, to say, wow, their process was terrible. And, and so, I, I can understand some of their frustrations, but I agree that they are also being manipulative.
Because they're going, what you're describing swings the pedulum from here to way over here in cutting out citizen input, in my opinion.
Exactly.
So.
That's just our formal protest to people who can't do anything about it, so.
I'm voting for these guys. I, I'm saying it on the record, they're getting elected over and over and over. Our legislators in Linden City have been the same legislators for the last 10 or 15 years. Why are we still voting for them?
And how are they voting on these issues? We need to make that a little bit more clear now, don't we?
You can see their, you can see their voting record.
Well said. Hand him the mic. Let's get officially on the.
Well, and.
I've got a few more.
Please, please go ahead. Sorry, we digressed.
No, any, any questions on land use authority? Who, land use authority and appeal authority? I, I do want to come back, like I said, in the future and have that discussion again about an administrative law judge because our board of adjustments met twice in the last five years. And so, I, I do wanna have that discussion again with you at some point. That Senate bill, couple other just housekeeping things that you should be aware of. It only allows city staff to do four, four review cycles. And so, we have to make sure, we have to do a better job of city staff making sure that an application is complete. And this, this is the second public hearing tonight, but on the, or after this item. But we have to make sure our checklist and our development manual is up to date and that's what we've done as well so that we can make sure we have a complete application every time it comes in. And so, it, it prohibits more than four re, review cycles except for like in a geological hazard area. If we miss something on a review cycle, on a, on a review, like, or sorry, when, on a final review, unless it's a public safety issue, we can't ask a developer to then put it in. And so, we, we have to make sure our, our reviews are very thorough.
But does the first review, I mean, I could see a developer taking major advantage of this by not providing all the information.
So I attended a, a breakout with the league and their council. And I, what I understood was, in that meeting, was if the application is not complete, it does not count.
It doesn't count. That's right. We have, we have to make sure that, so when a second review comes in, if they didn't answer our comments, we send it back to them, said, hey, we're not counting this as a review. You've gotta check.
Okay, all right, I like that.
We have 15 days to do our first review of city staff. Again, we need to update our development manual. What's that? Business days. Yes. Again, I already went through the thorough review process, engineering appeals. So this, this is a new appeal process that if there's a, if there's a discrepancy on an engineering standard, then we hire an engineer, the developer hires an engineer, and then there's an engineer that we agree on. And then that appeal authority makes a decision on an engineering standard and we have to share 50% the cost of paying for those engineers. So that, that's something new. It's very similar to the building code that they've, they've used on that for a while. So that's Senate Bill, sorry, I misspelled that up there, 174. House Bill 406. The, the major comment or the major change on this one is it changes the local street pavement width from 34 feet to 32 feet. And so, what our engineers have, are proposing is that we keep the same overall right-of-way width of 50 feet, but we increase our pay, our sidewalk width to five feet. And so, our engineers feel like that for a long time, they've wanted to propose a five-foot sidewalk for new developments. They feel it's better pedestrian-friendly, it matches up better with UDOT requirements. And so, they, so that, we make up for that 32 feet in the sidewalk, or that, we, we make up for that lost two feet in the sidewalk. And so, that, that's what House Bill 406 covers. There's some new, new definitions that the legislature has adopted. I'd like to adopt these five in our code as well. You can see them in, in, up here on the screen. They're also in your staff report. The, and then a couple other items from that subdivision that we, that we're proposing in our ordinance is that the planning commission, again, is the final land use authority. We, we've updated our, our processing requirements. So, you know, to note that the... Sorry, let me remember what we did on that processing. I think it's just updating that, again, that the planning commission's the preliminary approval, city staff is the final approval on that. We're taking care of the technical issues before like a subdivision plat is signed or the engineering plans are approved. For, the state allows for an exemption from plating requirements. As we looked at this, we, we thought, we liked the agricultural exemption from a plat. And so, we're, we're adopting this agricultural exemption for plating requirements from the state. It allows the planning commission to approve minor alignment changes in streets. So it doesn't allow them to remove a street. But let's, let's take, for example, the Norton property. The general plan just had that street going straight through. This allows the planning commission to work with the alignment, but doesn't allow them to remove a street. They'd have to do a general plan amendment to, to do that. That would go through you. Updates the categories of streets. So we, we're taking the language that's in the general plan saying local streets. The, sorry, what are our street names? It's just adopting those, the.
Minor, major.
Minor, major. It's adopt, it's, it's using that same language that's in the general plan, now putting it in the subdivision code. Right now, our ordinance says the planning commission has to approve all street names. We haven't been doing that, so we're just taking, we're taking that out. Let's see, we're making the correct references to the general plan and subdivision code. Right now, it also says all, all subdivisions are a conditional use permit. We haven't been operating that way. We haven't been using, we haven't been requiring them to get a conditional use permit. We're just giving subdivision approval. Then makes references to our flood damage ordinance and adopts the state appeal language for the engineering standards we already went through. And then finally, the, under the boundary line adjustment in our ordinance, it has this language that says when there's a difficult question then, or a unique situation, we take that to planning commission. As far as I know, we haven't used that since I've been here. We, Noah and I feel like we can handle those items. The planning commission also felt like, well, if city staff can't handle it, are we going to be able to handle it? So they just, let's, they said, leave that with city staff to adjust boundary lines approvals. So, any questions on, I know that's a lot. There's a lot in your packet on the subdivision code changes and zoning changes. Any questions for, for us as city staff?
Yeah, I just go back to my question as we kind of wrap our arms around this. You know, as elected officials and representing the citizens, I just wanna hopefully have more discussions with staff and, and council to learn how we have, you know, that proper transparency and that we need to have with our citizens as well as, as... So as these applications come in, is the council going to be notified so that we can at least, as citizens, as elected officials, kind of have, know what's going on since they're no longer going to come before us?
Well, I mean, we, we do send out, we send, do send you the agenda and so hopefully you're aware of that. We, we will still use all the noticing requirements in our ordinance. And so, that, you know, those will be noticed to the surrounding neighbors within 800 feet. And, and so, 500 feet, I think if it's residential, 800 if it's commercial. And so, we will still be noticing the residents on those.
So we'll just need to be really thoughtful. I feel like sometimes when things came to the council, it gave us an opportunity to really discuss and think through some of the ramifications of some... some of the ramifications of some applications that were requesting zone change and then their whole site, what the site was going to entail, and so.
If there's a zone change, you'll still be involved.
But they don't have to provide, and now, the site plan to us.
We require, as part of its own change, we require a site plan and, and so.
Right.
You'll, you, we will just need to make sure we're comfortable with that.
T's are crossed, I's are dotted, that's just my comment on this. Because sometimes we have a little bit of wiggle room to still figure out all the, the things that we want to make sure are, are tidied up. So, just want to understand how we'll, we'll need to adjust to that.
And I als, oh, oh, sorry, I also think that, um, I guess, how, how do I put this? It, it, I feel like it, we've all stated this, but this, that citizens and our legislators need to know that we feel like this is taking away our ability to have some thought in what's happening as representatives of, this is not us making these decisions, we're making them on behalf of the people who elected us. And I feel like it's distancing developers from that legislative us, from our abilities to be able to say that, or maybe we need to come in and tweak our ordinances, at least as long as the state allows it. But, um, I remember years ago, that outside of, I, I so appreciate all the things, first off, everything staff does, there are no problems with, with, with the staff does, only kudos. But, I'm so grateful, yes, that we get our, um, information regarding what's happening in the current agenda for city, or for the Planning Commission. But I remember, I don't remember if it was in our electronic packets or it was the paper, um, staff reports, that it would be some little synopsis of what was coming up. Do you remember those, Adam?
Yeah, we had a project tracking list.
Yes, that's what it was. And if that's something that we perhaps would help the council, the current elected officials, to be able to have a little bit of foresight of what's happening of those projects that are out the pike a little bit, but I, because I haven't seen those in, in a bit.
And I guess what concerns me along those lines to my previous comment is now the site plan doesn't come before the council. The site plan is just decided by the Planning Commission.
Well, it's always been decided by the Planning Commission unless you decide to call it up.
But we just don't have that option anymore.
That's happened a couple times in the last five years, though. I mean, that's.
Hey.
What, what you're concerned about really are very rare instances.
Well, but what I'm, my, what I'm imagining, though, is that applicants very frequently come to us and say, here's my thoughts. What, we, we want to hear what you think about this potential site plan, and that's where we have an opportunity sometimes to vet or review or give comment. And I'm not sure if applicants will need to come before the council to just even have a concept with us.
Nearly every one of those either require a zone change or an ordinance amendment to do what they want to do.
Okay.
And so, because those are a lot of times, when I'm looking at our site plan ordinance or our commercial design standards or something, I'm like, I don't know if that meets, you know, our requirements, or this is outside that, and then they, then they will come to you and, and, but it, but nearly always will, will require a zone change or an ordinance amendment.
So, seven hundred north would be a good example. You guys have seen a lot of concept reviews for various things, but it would all require changes to an ordinance or to a zoning standard. If, if, it would be really rare that a developer would come in and say, I've got a piece of property, I want to develop these eight residential lots, it's exactly what it's zoned for, why do they need to come to the City Council? If they can apply for something and they meet one hundred percent of the rules we have on the books, why do they need to go to the.
Sometimes when we're making exceptions, though, we're not quite sure all the unintended consequences. I'm thinking seven hundred, so help me understand, um, let's say, a zone change is given in our architectural standards right now, and, and we might have certain things that we want them to consider with the quality of the look and feel of the buildings. Our architectural standards are not quite strong enough or clear enough, in my opinion. Um, but that's where sometimes we, will we still have that same opportunity to maybe, that's, it eliminates that.
Your opportunity is if you feel that it's not up to par, you need to change that now. And rewrite the ordinance, that's your opportunity.
That's my concern, is that we won't have those opportunities with that discussion with applicants here with this body, which is the elected officials that have to then answer to the citizens versus staff or planning commissioners who are appointed and weren't elected.
And can I just point out, Mayor, that once they file that application, if they meet the current zone that, that Adam's talking about, even if we don't like it, we can't change it. Even if we want to tweak it, as soon as they file that application, they are vested if they don't need a, a modification. If, if they meet the code, we are just setting ourselves up for problems. If we call in the, the public and say, hey, I don't like this, I'm going to have to stand up as council and say, I'm sorry, but it meets the code. And even though the public is not happy with it, we can't do anything about it, because when they file the complete application,
Mm-hmm.
Those rights vest under the law. So, what Adam's saying is really important. If there are things that anybody has a concern with, that we think isn't quite right, we really do need to nail that down.
Well, let me give you a real-life example. When I served on the Planning Commission, uh, I always had a little heartburn about this. The ordinance, or, yeah, the, the ordinance or the, uh, the zoning would say you have a range of certain types of materials that you could use. You can use EPAS, you can use fluted block, you can use brick, you can use whatever. And we would have bloody knuckle sessions where they would come in and they were meeting the ordinance. But somebody on the Planning Commission decided they didn't like EPAS. Uh, these are what you call it, EPAS? Yeah, they didn't like that, and so, we get into this lengthy, you know, we'll reprove it if you put, you know, we're going to require you to put this much brick on it. Or I don't like this color, even though it's in the color palette. We, we will no longer have that, I mean, with the Planning Commission won't have that. I don't think they have the right to do it right now, myself.
You're correct.
Yeah, yeah, that, that was my opinion, that was my stand when I was on the Planning Commission, is some of the stuff we're requiring them to do is costly. And if it meets, I mean, I'd like to see nicer things, but if it meets the ordinance, if it meets the zone, then I'm with you. I mean, if we, if we don't like it, we need to change it.
And with, you know, for example, our commercial design standards, now that we've got the general plan adopted, we've got all these subdivision things hopefully taken care of here soon. You know, we, we did hire a co, uh, we did hire an architectural firm to help us with our design standards. I ha, I have, you know, a fairly good draft, but I need, it still needs some work. But that, that'll, I'll be working on that some more with the, with you and the Planning Commission and bringing that forward in the next, you know, few months, so.
One more question, go ahead, Randy.
Just, just a funny, but just to quote, um, Mayor Dane, you can't legislate ugly against ugly. So, no matter how hard we try.
And I'll be honest, Mike, to your point, I think a lot of builders and developers, they come into City Council or Planning Commission meetings and they're like, yeah, I'll just tweak it or change it so I can get my approval. And they don't push back on a lot of those things. But as the planning director, I had an individual, a planning commissioner years ago, who, who flat-out said to somebody sitting at that chair, if I tell you it's going to have a red roof, it's going to have a red roof. And everybody just bristled on the Planning Commission because there was no authority for that person to say that. And it wasn't in our codes or ordinances. And so, that, that type of thinking has led to a lot of these changes in the legislature and, and.
Well, a lot of them may have accepted it, but, but the feedback that I got over the co, three years I was on Planning Commission, they, they accepted, but they sure didn't like it.
So, I have a, yeah, I have a quick question. So, the site plan, if they're asking for a zone change, we will be able to review and see that. But sometimes there are examples where someone, when they go to build, maybe they don't meet the, um, you know, if there's extra things that they're doing above and beyond the code, say architecturally, that were presented to us visually, are they going to be beholden to meet that site plan that they give us? Or could they change what they actually build?
They could have another developer come in and, and change what they're, what they're doing. Yeah, it's so, sorry, even though you're, even though you're approving a zone change and you have a concept site plan, there's nothing that prohibits the next guy they just sold it to from changing that plan. Once you change the zone, your legislative authority is done.
What about the, the individuals that are saying, hey, we're going to do, we're, they're asking for something that we feel was a give and take, um, and then we feel like there's kind of an agreement, well, we'll give this, but you're giving that. So, how do we?
We have to make that a legislative action and amend our code at the same time that we are, you know, we have to adopt it and make it part of our code or regulations, or else that's just, hey, we're trusting you to do it this way. So, so if we come in on a, a zone change, you know.
Public hearing.
You, you could do that through a development agreement type of action. Some, some of the downsides, though, there are downsides to development agreements. And so, you're, you're locking yourself into a contract.
Yep.
And, and you no longer have authority to change that without going back to those people and amending a contract, is essentially what you've done.
But it also potentially holds them to a certain standard if there were certain promises made.
It holds you to the same standard. So, you have, you have given up your legislative authority by entering into a contractual agreement with somebody.
Yeah.
So, you can't then say, you know what, six months down the road, I don't want this zone and I'm going to change the zone. I don't know how you get out of that contract.
Well, I don't know that we've had that situ, we've done development agreements and we've been through that process. And we, we, we've had those experiences being positive and we've been careful not to enter into others, like you're saying. Okay, well, this is a public hearing, so.
It just almost got comical. So, someone didn't like white, even though the color palette allowed it, so they had to change, you know, they had to change name, it wasn't white, it was pearl. Or it was, I mean, you can get pretty technical on it, so.
I believe on that issue, white was not in the palette and they had painted white, so they had to go do a palette color.
Or they could do a pink, big pink stripe.
That was not in the palette either. All right.
From Inigo Montoya, um, Lincoln Jacobs. We keep, point of clarification, some of the comments have been, well, referencing the seven hundred north when developers come in and present. This is just for s, single houses and for townhouses, right? This doesn't include any of that commercial development?
Not commercial, but residential.
We're just modifying who, who the, or clarifying who the final land use authority is for when developments do come in.
But just developments on?
All, all development.
So, we're, we're, we're doing, so, we're, at the minimum, like I said, we're, we're supposed to, just, the Planning Commission can be the final land use authority for single-family homes, townhomes and two families. But, um, while we're going through this whole process, that, that's, you know, we're, we're now, we're also looking at, okay, since the planning commi, since the City Council only has major subdivisions, commercial, well, yeah, condominium plats and commercial subdivisions left, why don't we just give those to the Planning Commission? Because they already, you know, are spelled out in our ordinance as well. And so, so that's why we're in this discussion too about land use authorities.
Missed that first part, sorry.
There, there's not a lot of changes that have been in this that will materially impact what you do in every single meeting, in my opinion. There, there's a handful of things that you might not see anymore, but it's not substantial. Most of the things the Planning Commission is already doing. They're approving most of the subdivision plats, they're approving most of the commercial site plans. But it's for things that you, as, as the elected officials, have said, these are permitted. So, you've said, yes, you can do a car wash in our commercial zone in this area on that street. And so, their role is then just saying, okay, we're going to review the nitty-gritty details about approving car wash in that location.
When you say that, that's collectively city councils over many years that said that this could be in there. Doesn't mean it's come to this council or the last council, or it's come at some point.
I see quite a.
So, if you're concerned about something, then we need to change it.
You've got a lot of reading to do.
Well, there's, I, I'm seeing quite a few things that we will no longer do. For example, site plan, that's no longer coming before us.
You didn't have site plan before this.
We were the appeal authority on that.
Appeal authority, so only if the Planning Commission, if the developer says, you did something wrong, you denied my application, I want to appeal it.
Right.
And then it would come to the City Council.
And so, that, so that begs the question, then, how we want to make up the Board of Adjustment, which you'll come back later. And we'll determine who those, who represents us on that.
And on, like, like Adam was saying, on an appeal, you're only, the appeal authority's only looking whether the Planning Commission interpreted or applied an ordinance correctly. And, you know, they're not talking about what color things should be or the roof slope or, or something, so.
All right. Any other public comment?
Fight it.
We need to get local people, local representatives to run for the legislature instead of all the attorneys and developers being there.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing, Mayor.
Motion?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Powell, seconded by Councilmember Vancheri to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
And, and to go back to, uh, Councilmember Powell's comment, that, you know, this is our software, this ha, this is all the applications we're working on right now or that are just getting finalized. You know, I, I'd be glad to fu, provide you a screenshot of this and, um, you know, on a monthly basis or however long you want it, by, you know, every couple weeks, just saying where we're at on things and so you can see what applications we have in or what are forthcoming, so.
Just remember that being a great tool of just being aware.
Yeah.
All right, so this does have, item number twelve does have a, a motion, sample motion. If we have no further discussion, I'd entertain.
I'll begrudgingly move to approve ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-two dash oh, approving amendments to the subdivision code sections of the Linden City Code as to bring those codes into compliance with, as to bring those codes into compliance with Utah State Code SB one seventy-four, as presented.
Make sure grudgingly gets them.
Yes, I was going to say, I'd begrudgingly second that. Okay. Motion by necessity.
Councilmember Hoyt, seconded by Councilmember Powell, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You know, you could have opposed that, it would still pass.
Well, let me, let's back up. I can't, I can't oppose something I second.
All right.
Somebody else could.
All right, we're on to item number thirteen. Uh, this is also a public hearing on the development.
Motion to open a public hearing.
Thank you. Motion by Councilmember Broderick, seconded by Councilmember Powell, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, Ken.
All right, so this is kind of a follow-up to the, the last item. So, this is updating our development manual. Uh, so we, we've went through and kind of done a comprehensive update of, of chapters one, two, and five. I want to bring back the other chapters to you in a future date. But number one, chapter one is a community profile and department contact information, that's being updated. Uh, chapter two, this, this is a lot about our checklist for each land use application, so what's required for site plan approval, for subdivision approval, uh, those different land use applications. So, this is providing a good checklist, uh, to developers on what needs to be provided. This is also providing updates to the, the land use application submittal process. You know, it, it, last time it was, had a comprehensive update was twenty fifteen. This updates it now that we're doing online applications. We've also updated some specifications in chapter two, provided for when a traffic study is required, and then updated some bonding language as well for, uh, public infrastructure. Chapter five updates, uh, the street profile standards. And so, the, it takes that five-foot sidewalk and at, and applies it to all new developments now. Um, and so, let me actually go to that. So, it, let me, sorry, let me zoom in. So, again, this is the, the thirty-two-foot pavement requirement that's required by state law for local residential streets, but, um, does the five-foot sidewalk. Again, so we go through the collector, local, commercial, and, and add that five-foot sidewalk, uh, to all the new, news, or for new developments. Couple standards we're getting rid of because, um, they aren't used is the six-foot trail. Um, so engineering said we should get rid of that standard because we don't use a six-foot trail in Linden. Again, updates the sidewalk standard, uh, here. Uh, also gets rid of this, um. So, this is a transition, let's see, let me, actually, let me make sure on this one. So, this is the mod, yeah, again, this is the modified curb return for a six-foot, uh, trail. So, it, it strikes out this requirement, uh, or this standard in our development manual. So it strikes out this requirement or this standard in our development manual. And so, so any questions on the, the different standards that are updated in the development manual or the processes that we've, we've updated?
Very thorough work, thank you on this. I mean, I'm sure all of us here on the council can't commend you enough that we're so far ahead of the curve already because of just really good, clean work on, on things, so. All right, council, any further questions or discussion?
Any public comment?
I'll motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hoyt, seconded by Councilmember Broderick. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, bringing this back to you, council, for the ordinance adoption.
I move to approve ordinance 2023-24-0, approving updates to the Linden City Land Development Policy Standards Specifications and Drawing Manuals, as presented.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hoyt, seconded by Councilmember Broderick. Any further discussion? All right, we'll bring it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Okay, we're going now on to item number 14. This is also a review and action regarding the, oh, sorry, did I, my...
Did yours not have the number, the ordinance number?
I didn't have 14, what, 15 is 14 in the staff report.
Oh, is it? Anyone else saw that?
Yeah, sorry.
Oh, it is, it is flipped.
I sent out an updated one, so you might be looking at the old, I sent out two emails. One had an updated city, or packet, sorry.
It's okay.
On the first one, I left this stuff out, so.
All right.
So this item is to approve the 2024 road maintenance bids. We received bids from several companies. They're included there on this updated staff report. And our low, low bid price was the 1.307 million from Geneva Rock Products. The packet included, that updated packet included this map to show the project locations, and then had this legend over here that had the different types of, of updates that would be approved in those locations, so. Pretty straightforward.
Welcome on that Canal Drive.
What's that?
Mighty welcome on that Canal Drive.
Yeah, when that's all done. So the current project on Canal Drive, just as you mentioned, that is waterline replacement and then the laterals of each home being replaced, that connection to the new main. And then they are patching that temporarily, and then this project next year will redo the street. So if you hear from people along Canal Drive saying, wow, this, this is terrible and all they did was just patch this trench and the road is still falling apart, the improvement is coming next year.
Could I ask if we could put some of this information more front and center, not just in the tabs for, I don't know, it's probably in, in the tabs for Public Works, but if we could put that more front and center for people, that we could say, go to the website and you'll see all that information more detailed?
Yeah, yeah, we can do that.
I agree with that. That's one of the questions we could ask more than anything.
Yep.
It's, it's...
Why's my road look like that? And I always say, well, check it and you'll see that when it's coming up, so.
Okay. We got this buddy Van who talks to me about it all the time. All set, Dan.
If it's getting done, you can, you can praise Van, so, is what I always say. Kudos go to him.
I feel pretty good about this.
Big results, please.
Any action on that?
Yeah.
Yes, we do.
I, well, ready?
Just one comment there. When you go, 1307 to 1308. Wow.
That's tight.
That is tight bidding.
Yep.
That is tight bidding.
Although we have a good relationship with Geneva Rock, we know they're pretty good, huh? I don't know this Black Pack Forest, maybe.
So you'd be very comfortable, those are solid type numbers in the bidding process.
Okay, if you're ready, I will make a motion to approve the 2024 road maintenance bid award to Geneva Rock, the low bidder, in the amount of a million 307,469.26. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Vancheri, seconded by Councilmember Broderick. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Get those roads going. Okay, we're then on to our last item of the evening, which Adam has already explained. We're not going to be able to, to do an action on this until tomorrow.
I make a motion to continue, item number 15.
Although, Adam, is there anything you wanted to present?
Um, just really quick, just for those that didn't come in right at the beginning of the meeting, they sent, the county sent the updated totals as of 4:01 today PM, and this was the updated totals for those precinct areas, so just as an FYI. And if we get an update that has any changes in this, that's what we'll be adopting tomorrow, so. And Kathy, correct me if I'm wrong, there's not much that goes on in that adoption. They basically give us a printout and we say, okay, this is what they said it is, and so...
Fastest meeting ever.
It's, it's just, it's not like the old days when we opened some provisional envelopes and all that kind of stuff.
Okay. All right.
And 5:15 tomorrow, is that?
5:15, we'll just be in the conference room over here and it'll be really fast.
I'll second Van's motion.
Okay, motion to...
Continue this item to tomorrow.
Continue this item to tomorrow.
To tomorrow, and we posted that agenda for tomorrow already, and Darryl said he can be there. If for some reason one of you three can't be, I might be calling you, Randy, and just get you on a speakerphone.
Well, I just have to be out the door from wherever I'm going. I got to head out at 5:30 on the dot, so I will...
Okay.
Yes, keep me posted.
Okay. 5:15.
And, and, and before we go on, can I just say how glad I am that we have, we're at 5:15 most nights instead of this? And on that note, I'd say, can we adjourn, Mayor?
All right, so wait, we have a motion by Broderick, and seconded by Councilmember Powell to continue item number 15. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, take it away.
Adjourn. I'm motion to adjourn.
All, motion, seconded by Broderick, all in favor to adjourn.
I'm going to get one more shot of this.
I...
Hey, I think on that second to last one, it was me.
Yeah, that's who I had, I was just going to ask.
I was going to try to get that fixed.
You got it covered.
All right, sounds great.
Yeah, just seven o'clock. I'm glad we went away from it. It's, that's not, you had Monday evening better.
Nobody gave you the big leap that's gotten you crap anyway.
Okay.
Yeah. It is a Monday night pickleball sacrifice, just so you know.
Remember, you signed up for it.
I know.
I'm sorry, that was never my...